All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the school committee meeting of February 16th, 2022. This meeting is being broadcast on WHCA and being recorded. If you could, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So we only have a couple items on the agenda tonight. The first one is something that came up fairly recently, which is a good thing, which is a good thing. So in your packets, there's a field trip request. If I'm understanding correctly, it's because we have a number of wrestlers that are in the state tournament.
Yep.
And they'd like to stay overnight rather than return back. So if I could have a motion to accept that field request.
They'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Great, unanimous. And good luck to the wrestling team.
So they're going Friday morning. I think weigh-ins are at 9:00 a.m. And the reason they want to stay over is Saturday is another 9:00 a.m. So instead of traveling back and forth to Fitchburg, they just wanted to stay. So next item on the agenda is budget. And I kind of want to lay out a little bit of what I'm thinking of tonight. So first and foremost, I think I want to talk about three things. One, I'd like to hear feedback from the committee on the presentation. If there are things that we missed, that we need to prepare or get you more documentation going forward. And think about this for next year. Two, answer questions about what we presented, trying to identify what your thoughts are and areas of either concern or where we can move forward on. And then three, kind of looking ahead. We've talked a lot about sustainability. We're looking five years from now. And what happens when federal money runs out in fiscal '25? So if that's where we want to be, I think before I open it up to the discussion, I really want to thank Mr. Stambrook. He's kind of been working tirelessly since January, putting documents together. I think you have a plethora of documents. And he and I are going to try to answer as many questions as you have tonight. And if we can't answer a question, we'll get back to you on it. It's just a lot of information for us to go through. In fact, today, we were in his office and we moved some things around again. A lot of moving parts. And I just want to remind the committee, people at home. Last year at this time, when we were here, we were projecting a budget for kids to return to school. We still weren't in school yet. We were in a hybrid mode. I had homeschool students and I had 500-plus students in a remote program that we were paying for. So we also had federal money that came out of the blue in ESSER II and ESSER III. And we were starting to use federal funds. And ESSER III, the grant didn't actually come about for us until June. And there were actually rules to the grant. The numbers came out and said, hey, look, you're entitled to $2.3 million. But they didn't give us any rules to follow. So kind of sort of opening it up to thoughts on the presentation. Is there anything that we didn't provide that we need to do? Or we omitted? We tried to stick to the goals of the committee. We tried to stick to the superintendent's goals and putting forth a budget with services and staffing to meet the needs of all our students returning to school post-pandemic and moving forward and working through any type of regression or learning loss. So any thoughts before we get into questions?
So I guess, Jeff, I just want to, I want to share one important thing because I think it's important publicly to recognize this, right? So at least as long as I can remember having been on the committee, we haven't really done long-term financial planning, right? So, and I don't know how many years before that, but it's, you know, so what I've observed and lived through the budget process is basically every year we do the budget. And we just try and get through the budget for that year. And we just kind of get through it. And sometimes it's really stressful and difficult and challenging, but we get through it. And then we kind of put everything away. And roughly the same time, a year later, we start the process and we kind of do the same thing over and over again. I think one of the things that we've all collectively introduced to the process this year is that long-term plan, right? And looking at how the budget will fold out over a five-year period, right? And so that is very different. I think it's important to recognize that that is very different. We have not done that in the past. But some of the challenges that we may have in doing that now are probably helpful because it's pay me now or pay me later, right? The issues exist, right? If we, we simply say, hey, well, this is what we're going to do and we'll just deal with that. Well, then we do deal with that, but oftentimes in a retroactive reactive-type environment. So I think it's just important to understand, this is, this is a very different budget process that we're undertaking this year when we start to spend time on things like, hey, this is the five-year plan. Here are some of the things that may change over that period of time. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear because I have a feeling we will spend some time, based on what we talked about, we'll spend some time on that, kind of looking longer term. But that's a very different process. So hopefully with the public and folks that are here, you can be patient and work with us on, again, building that long-term plan. I think that's consistent with what the towns are doing. I know Whitman's doing a lot. I actually read the strategic plan that they approved last night. So long-term planning, finding, it makes sense. I think we're all kind of coming to the same conclusion that just waking up one morning and being like, hey, let's do this. That's rough. But kind of having a long-term plan and thinking about how that all fits, that's important. So hopefully we can continue to do that tonight. So Fred.
The one thing I would like to bring up, because there are aspects of this budget that at least in the short-term planning, that we have to be cognizant of next year, year after.
Precisely.
And how the dominos are affecting. So I think a long-term plan is a great thing. But we have to be cognizant as to what we may do now that can affect next year and the year after and so forth.
Yeah, to me, that is the definition of long-term planning. So I couldn't agree more. Like, that is the definition.
Needs to be addressed within our conversations tonight.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely. So where do you want to go? I know there was some follow-up items from the last meeting, or do you want to go to?
Yeah.
Just, I think we're looking for feedback on the budget. So content, certainly a lot of content there, thank you. One question I asked this week was regarding our OPEB contributions. So was there a place in the documents? Did I miss it? Can that be provided so we can see historically what contributions we may have had and so forth? So I can't put my finger on it right now. But other feedback is all of these reports are fantastic and important. And maybe next year, if they could be consolidated into one PDF or one booklet in some manner. But thank you very much for providing all of this detail. And maybe some of it, I don't know. You know, not that it's redundant, but I don't know what I'm trying to say. Just, you know, there's, there's a lot of content and just organizational-wise, like the line item reports, there were two of them, right? I think one was, you know, everything by school and then everything by other account numbers. So that's great to see those two things. I don't think both of those would need to go into a budget book, maybe. So that's just my feedback.
So one of the things Chris and I talked about was OPEB for the March meeting, the regular business meeting.
Okay.
So OPEB and that will be on that. We did not include OPEB in the budget.
Okay.
Or any of those documents at this point.
Thank you.
Any other feedback?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
So I just want to say thank you for all the work that went into this. And then the subsequent work that went into everybody's questions from last week that went in. And I want to thank John specifically because he has a regular everyday job too, as does everybody in the administration. And this is a lot of materials to come up with and a lot of the questions. Some of the questions I think maybe could have been asked before. And so it could have been ready earlier if you had, you know, some of the people had those questions. But I understand sometimes it's not until you get the information. But I just want to say thank you for all the work. Because I know it's got to be difficult when you have your day-to-day stuff to do. Plus, everybody's questions coming at you, 10 people here asking questions. So I just want to say thank you.
And we'll do the best we can answering those questions too. There's just a lot of information. Chris, Steve.
Yeah.
Do you mind if I ask, I think it was asked of a few of us. What is, are we looking for the total expenditure of everything? I know we got one budget number here, around $58 million. What is that, 545? 543. But I seem to hear that we're looking for more, but it's not coming out of the general fund per se. So is there a way maybe, and I don't know, John doesn't need one more document to do, but all the revenues, where they're coming from, and then all the, all of the, all of the budget, all the spending that's going on, maybe I should say it that way.
So John, John, what document was that? That you have your, the ESSER document and the special revenues? Are they on a document? Because Steve, I think they're in the packet.
Yeah.
Just don't know which number.
Right, right, yeah. And that's what I was, thank you. 20.
Oh, 20?
Probably that one.
Go up to the mic, John, please.
If we take the general fund amount and then you add the document 20 amount, I think I have the right number in my head here, but I want to find it.
Special revenue fund.
The special revenues, is that?
Yeah, right, that's right.
So if you take, you took the general fund amount and then you took the special revenue fund from doc, a total from that page, that would give a, an amount that could be spent. I'm not sure if that answers your question, but.
Steve, can you kind of rework? I want to help make sure we answer the question. What was, is the question what the total budget is or what?
I think, well, the measurement that I've read from an email was that we were saying that it's 5.77. And if I'm off by a couple percentages, I'm sorry. 5 point whatever. But feedback was, well, it sounds like it's more like seven if you include the ESSER spending and so forth. Do you know what I'm referring to in regards to that? And I'm not trying to make it a.
So I think, I think you're, I think you're trying to ask the question of, if we were comparing this year's budget to last year's budget and we take into account.
Right, okay.
Circuit breaker and potential other funding sources. What would be, you know, how does that change the budget?
I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't so much worried, and I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not so much worried about the percentage part right now. I'm just trying to get an idea, at least for this particular question, that kind of arose to us. What is, what is, what's being spent? What are those other things that are being spent? Like, it might not be this year, last year comparison, but it's definitely just what is the upcoming year.
So maybe I can help you with that.
Sure.
As we, as we move along and we'll keep that question.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I guess I have, I know what you're referring to, Steve.
Yeah.
And is it, isn't it along the same lines of like we're using one-time funding sources? And that's inflating the overall budget for future years? I think that's the concern, right? That's how I understand it. I don't know if I have it right or wrong.
I think there's multiple concerns, but I think, you know.
Think the one he's talking about is that, no?
Well, yeah, it's as a part, but there's a whole bunch. So I know it's very difficult to say, you know, write down, I mean, obviously, this year, last year is perfect to look at, you know? But let's, I don't want to get us too far down the line and then someone, you know, hey, you know, that was never really answered, you know, what's totally being spent? Whether it's additional one-time monies or whatever.
Yeah, I think it's a relative question, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I think it's a relative question. I mean, you know, appropriate question based on the question that came was. But I kind of had a feeling we'd address it at some point tonight, yeah.
We're going to try to.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so a couple of things, before we get into other questions from the committee, a couple of things from last week. We talked about ESSER funds and we talked about special education. So let me just go to document 28, on your last, on your last page.
So this, this is in the new packet?
Yes, it's in the new packet.
Yeah.
Could be the last page.
Okay. Yes, the very last, the very last page of the new packet, there we go.
So this, this really explains ESSER as we go and what we've appropriated it for. Excuse me, let me take off my mask for a minute. We had an FY '21 allocation of 292, 273, which we used for ed tech. FY '22 allocation, that's ESSER II, a total allocation, I believe, of $1,881,816 in ESSER II. And then ESSER III, you can see the 2.3 over FY '23 and FY '24. So we used ESSER II funds as we go forward. For FY '22, and this, we tried to put this slide together. For FY '22, we used 494,364 in staffing, professional staff. We used 282,481 in paraprofessionals. Or support in paraprofessionals, meaning tutors as well, academic tutors. We looked at additional stipends for staff. We used 46, 48 for stipends totaling in FY '22 of 781,494. We have to use budget for employee benefits. We used $10,000 for data, looking where our students are. Ed tech software and hardware were things within technology this year. I'm blanking out on what, one of the, the software system or softwares that we used. GoGuardian is part of that software when we went with one-to-one. And then COVID-related business maintenance expenses totaling 272, 322. Or for FY '21, 1,881,655.
The 10th step.
FY '22.
FY '22, correct.
Okay.
What we're looking at in FY '23 for allocations, using ESSER II money at 240,868 and then ESSER III of 1,645,1670. Total ESSER funds this year of 1.35385. 595, 975 in staff. And those were those four new staff members we added to the budget this, or to ESSER this year. Meaning the secondary interventionist, the two EL teachers and the BCBA. Again, paraprofessionals, we had to add paraprofessionals this year unvenants to us for loss in '22. We're going to keep them there in '23 for 242,717. We, when we wrote this grant last summer, we were writing for something we were projecting two years from now. So we wrote in a number for stipends for staff and for summer programming. And again, all of these outside of the benefits can be moved with an agenda or an amendment. We would just have to write to DESI and write an amendment if we need be. 73,000 for employee benefits. If we need COVID cleaning this year, we are spending $20,000 for equity, looking at our equity, doing an equity audit. The substitute line, we added 73,000 for subs. If need be, we would like to get a full, excuse me, a building sub that we can split between the two towns if need be, because subs are at a minimum. Supplies and materials, we don't know what those are yet. We will ask building principals what they need. We have, we have one-time funds for that. General classroom supplies at 23,9. Again, COVID-related expenses and then summer busing. For a total of 1,305,385,62 for FY '23. ESSER II goes away in FY '24 and we have remaining ESSER III funds. Using almost the same amount of money for staff, if we don't shift anybody over to the general budget. Paraprofessionals is cut down. We have to reevaluate if we need those paras. Stipends for teachers, staying the same, could be that amount, that could be less. Remain the same for summer programming for FY '24, so kids this summer and next summer will have programming at schools. Equity, COVID cleaning if needed, equity work, same. Supplies, one-time funding in FY '24, or excuse me, substitutes. Supplies and materials at 80. General classroom supplies at 12,5. COVID-related building expense and then summer transportation for 1,02, 198. Totalling of ESSER funds at 3,608,674. So when we presented last year around putting people into the budget, those interventionists, which we were going to rename job coach, or not job coaches, coaches, because interventionist sounds like we're doing a intervention for substance abuse. So we're going to rename those folks.
Yeah.
And special education programming, meaning we looked at inclusion slash co-teaching at Whitman Middle. We looked at a K-5 curriculum director for special education. We also looked at the Hanson Middle School TLC program that we were pulling out of these one-time funds with the thought process that we were going to integrate them into the budget. And most of those people were integrated into this budget. That's why you saw the escalation in instruction because those folks were paid for last year out of one-time funding. This is where the committee will have to decide, either we keep those folks in the budget or move them to ESSER and shift some things around if they're not determined to be long-term costs. We feel the coaches and the special education program people, the TLC, the co-taught folks, the coaches that I said and the K-5 elementary curriculum, special education coordinator are valuable assets to the district and we would like to see them in the district budget. The coaches are usually, have been in, not our budget, in Whitman-Hanson, but in local town budgets for years and years. We would like to see them maintained and through this budget of FY '23 that I presented, we moved some of those folks over. We moved interventionists over, or and interventionists over. We moved the special education people over. And then try to remain, keep the assessment to the towns as low as possible with the inclusion of what Lauren was looking for, for new staff in the district budget and the inclusion of full-day K. I am concerned about the ESSER money going away in FY '25. But if we're looking at it big picture again, that one-time money is for learning loss. And we were supposed to address that in learning loss. We're looking at it in FY III, using it appropriately with our job coach, or with our, excuse me, with our coaches and through special education. And I think our special education pieces are solid. We will remain to keep those folks in. And again, if this committee tells me to move some things out of the district budget as far as the coaches interventionists, we can still do that and reallocate some ESSER funds. However, those will go away in FY '25 and we will not have those other lines to use. We would just, George, myself, would have to just write an amendment to move those monies around. And again, when we wrote this, these grants for ESSER II and for ESSER III, they were a year ahead of time. This, this grant was written last summer for ESSER III and we had already passed the budget. So this committee has to decide or let me know how you feel about keeping those coaches into the FY '23 budget or moving them over to the ESSER piece. Again, we moved some of those folks over. This line item as far as in ESSER III for FY '23, we are asking for four additional staff members. And those two ELs and that math secondary interventionist, I don't know if I'm going to need that person, people, in FY '25. We had an EL bubble this year. It's, there, those two ELs are not, those two EL teachers are not in the district budget. You saw on my presentation two weeks ago that we had a bump of 40 ELs. We have now, and I know Fred asked this question. I don't know if we qualify for Title III yet, but we are looking to do that because we have moved from a low incident district to the second tier. We are above 100 students. So potentially those two EL teachers that we're paying out of ESSER could potentially be paid for out of a federal, another federal grant that could be sustainable through the Fed. Those, those are the reasons we added those four folks. The two interventionists, coaches, that are very expensive. And the tech coach are still in the federal funds. We haven't moved those over. I moved the other, some of the other folks over into the general budget for this year. So Steve, part of that is that those federal funds are there, those one-time funds that are going to go away. And we have to make a decision by FY '25. And when Chris said long-term planning, I don't know if we're going to be in the same spot we are going into September of '22 in September of 2025. That's the hard part of making these decisions on these pieces of projecting where our students are going to be. I think we did a nice job of preparing with the curriculums that we have. So we have things that our coaches can look at, break down, and then provide feedback to the building level specialists, math and reading specialists, so that they can then provide extra support, especially for our K-5 kids. The inter-reading program and the iReady math program are, have been essential to this process. So that's the, the plan right now with, in, in ESSER III of where we have these funds moving forward. And again, we moved some of these folks, you can see, moved five positions into the general budget for this year. Four special ed and one interventionist. On those line items, they are all over the place. Because again, when we were in COVID last year, we had many of those teachers teaching remotely and we didn't have places to put them in the line items for this year. So when John Tuffey was doing the budget for this year, some of those staff members were teaching remotely. I just want to remind folks, we had a full K-8 remote program for students that many districts did not offer. Our high school teachers were teaching virtually, live stream. But we had a full remote program for our K-8 kids. So the line items are funky this year, to say the least, of where people are at. But we did move those folks back into the general ed budget. Does that answer your question a little bit, Steve?
Absolutely. I mean, that, that, and it's probably just something that, you know, I obviously went through a protocol thing myself and, you know, everything wasn't staying to mind and so forth. But that's perfect to what I really needed to hear and I'm sure a lot.
But, but I'm really cautious about FY '25.
Yeah.
Hillary made the comment at the last meeting. But I don't know what we're going to need in '25 and I don't know if they're going to be in the district budget in '25. Or if we add them now in the titles that they are, they are teachers. The, the district coaches that we had were, were teachers within the district. We didn't move out from without. We hired their replacements. So a reading teacher, an EL teacher, ELL teacher, excuse me, an English teacher is now one of our district reading specialists, or our, our district coaches. We had to replace her. So we hired from within. That doesn't mean, and I talked about attrition in the past. If in FY '25, this committee says, and we provide feedback, that our students are up to where they should be, we can then modify those positions to talk about related arts, to talk about what other issues have come about. What I feel really strongly about is not moving those special education positions that we moved into the budget as far as the co-teaching, as far as the TLC program at Hanson Middle, as far as the supports of the K-5 position and moving those back into one-time funding source when there's an opportunity here by using all of our circuit breaker money, pushing this budget forward to justify those positions.
So I know Hillary has something, I just, I guess I just want to clarify to make sure everyone's reading the same way. So in FY '21, we used $292,000 of ESSER-related funding in the budget, yes?
In the budget? No, we purchased, purchased equipment.
So it was, we utilized, we had $292,000 of expenditures that we had federal funding for. So specifically, we used it for hardware and tech.
Yes.
And then in FY '22, there was a million dollars.
Yes.
And in FY '23, it's projected to be 1.3. And in FY '24, a million dollars. And then in FY '25, there's zero. So.
Yes.
Part of the conversation, I think where we need to spend some time tonight is specifically really understanding, when you say there is six FTEs and there's seven FTEs and there's seven FTEs and there's all these FTEs that are now being funded for out of these federal funds, to me, there's a real danger if we're using one-time federal money to satisfy those positions. It's almost like we need you to tell us part, you need to kind of make that decision. Are they real positions that we're going to maintain? Because to me, then they should be in the operating budget. They shouldn't be federal-funded positions or they're not. Because this is where I get really nervous, like what happens to these, what happens to these 10, 17 positions in FY '25?
So right now, we put, out of these six positions, we put five of those back into the, to the district budget out of FY '22. back into the, to the district budget, out of FY22. So right now...
We have seven in FY23.
So I'm asking for, for four.
Can you, can you tell us, I'm sorry, this is my question.
Yeah, sorry. You'll get us the same.
What are those seven positions, those seven FTEs? What are they?
So there, there, they are two EL teachers. They're BCBA.
One?
Yes.
I'm sorry, can you, well, this is FY23?
The seven full-time positions.
Right. No, but there's one, and then you rattled off.
Oh, I'm sorry. An EL, there are two English language learning teachers. Warren, the acronym for BCBA?
He is a behavioral specialist.
A behavioral specialist.
And, I'm sorry, what school is that behavioral specialist at? Is that the Hanson Middle School program? They're not some...
The new position right now in...
Sorry.
Right now, they're, I'm using some grant money for contracted services to provide the behavioral support to Indian Head. They don't have a behaviorist, like a lot of our other schools. Our BCBA's are district-wide, so I move them based on need. But right now, Indian Head has strictly contracted services, BCBA support, so that, this person would primarily service that school.
What about, do, is there one for Duval or Conley to share? Or do they each have their own right now?
Right now, because of the programs that are at Duval and Conley, they have a full-time person. It hasn't always been that way, but as our programs have grown, they, they're needed, they're full-time.
There's a behavioral program at Indian Head now?
There is a new behavioral program at Indian Head now, yeah, which is why they need increased support.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Keep going. Do you want to know where the two ELs are, or no?
The two ELs will go to Conley and Duval.
Correct.
Okay. The, so I said the BCBA, and then it's the, the tech coach. It is two other coaches.
Two?
Two, two interventionists now slash coach.
Yep.
And then a, a technology coach. When we added one-to-one, there's a definite need for on-the-ground K-8 support for all our, for all our teachers.
And the interventionist coaches, where are they? Was one at the high school?
District-wide.
District-wide?
Yep.
So I think that's six, yes? Two ELs, one BCBA.
Five, six. I only count.
And then one secondary interventionist that we're looking for. Math. We have, we have an ELA secondary, six through 12, six through eight, really, because they, but they work with the, the high school department heads, and we don't have math support.
I did have a...
Hold on, hold on. Hillary's still, we're still on Hillary's question.
So I have the same, I expressed these concerns at the last budget meeting, but I have the same concern, sort of that Chris said, right? So our EL population has gone up in the last two years, right? So you could argue that, you could forecast that we're going to need those positions and keep them in. You could, right? The BCBA is, again, a program that we have at a school, that there's a need for that. So right there off the bat, to me, those are three positions that can't be funded by these ESER funds. I, I, I have significant concerns about providing services to students who need them, particularly a BCBA and our EL, right, where we could sort of get into some compliance issues and things like that. And then having to not have those, or taking those services, taking other services away from other students. You know, a third-grade classroom is now, I, whatever the, you know, instead of 22 kids, it's 35 kids, because we have to cut. Sometimes these, the BCBA's can be more expensive because of the certifications and things that they have. So I have concerns. I understand what you're saying about the interventionists and things, because those can sort of be absorbed. But I guess my other concern with that is, if those were teachers, now they're going to bump off a newer teacher, right, who also costs less money for us, that we need to think about. But I, I have a lot of concerns, and even if you look at the paraprofessionals, which you said this year we had to add a lot more, so projected for FY24, we lose seven paraprofessionals. So I don't know, does that mean that those were, would be absorbed into the budget, or are those just cut because those students might not need that?
We have to, we have to reevaluate our, our para situation.
Okay.
You know, we really do. We, we front-loaded this year.
Yep.
And we front-loaded for FY23, and it's going to give us two years to really evaluate if we need the amount of pairs that we have.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I just, I'm not sure, I understand the complexities of the cost of all of this, but at the end of the day, these are, to me, those three positions that I said, actually, even the tech coach, the four positions, should be positions that are bumped into the general budget. I, I don't see, especially the EL with the way things are, you know, the, the enrollment and things. I don't know that you can say in two years you're not going to need them. In two years, you might need a third.
We...
Right? And, but, we could be Tier 3, and, you know, so, but, I just, I don't know. Those are my thoughts about that.
Thank you, Fred, and then, Fred.
Just to follow up real quick, the behavioral specialist, because I forget the initials.
BCBA, Fred.
And Lauren, you said that it was currently funded through a grant?
No.
I thought she said she was currently paying for the person through a grant.
It's contracted services, yeah. A grant that covers contracted services.
Okay. So would that grant be available for next year, and continue to be available?
This particular one, likely no.
Okay. Likely no, but there's a possibility if we apply?
It's the 252 grant, which is tied to COVID. Trying to remember the name. It's called the American Rescue Plan. So I don't know if they're going to continue with that. It's not like our 240 grant, or our 262 grant, that's tied to IDEA, that is ongoing. I mean, we, you know, we, we are staffing with that, and, and we project that we're going to have that every year. When that grant came through, 252, I had to look at specific needs that I could fund one time for right now. So that's why we chose the added behavioral support at Indian Head, knowing that we had a new program there, rather than take it from other buildings.
Fred, just to jump in on that, too. Just around the BCBA piece, Lauren and I went back and forth on this, too. We're seeing much more behavior this year, and I don't know if that's going to be there in '25 again. We do have a BCBA, we have, almost have a BCBA in every, every elementary school and both middle schools. Correct, Lauren?
Um, the middle school share, they're sharing right now. Yep.
So we've come since 2019, when we were contract servicing BCBA's. I think Dr. Whitner had brought two in, and then we've built that up, so that we can address student needs at the, at the root level with specialists. This was another one, I'm not sure if we're going to need in '25. Probably. But, that being said, a, a need to, to not, to not actually put it in the, the LEA budget and using one-time funds. I don't disagree with Hillary right here. I could put all these things into the LEA budget and change the numbers, and we can move things around. Or we can pull those interventionist coaches out and substitute them in. But like I said, we, we put some of those folks into, just trying to gravitate them over, because we believe those coaches are something we're, are, are going to move our students forward in the next five to 10 years.
There's definitely an uptick right now in our students' ability to regulate their behaviors, not just at school, but at home. So our BCBA's are doing home FBAs, they're doing school FBAs. Having good behavioral support helps us keep kids in district, because once the behavior, once we can't kind of maintain, that's when we start looking it out of the...
I'm not questioning the need whatsoever. You folks are the professionals, not me.
I understand.
Not questioning the need, just questioning if there's another dollar source or another way of paying for something.
Can I just ask a follow-up, just clarifying? So the reason that the students at Indian Head aren't going to Duval and Conley is because those programs are full. So there was a need for, or is, I mean, I know, like, full is an operative word. I understand with the behavioral classroom, but, short answer, yes.
So, short answer, yeah. We, Conley's was the only program that we had. We had two classrooms, and we were, whether it was just a bubble or a trend, there were a lot of students from Indian Head that we were sending over there. It was a big program, and we had more students in the pipeline, and that we just reevaluated and said, rather than, we have a whole cohort that we can meet their needs right here in their home school, which we're always looking to do, to keep kids with their peer group. So that's why we decided to open a second one.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Fred?
Well, mine is kind of a comment. I, when we're listening to what everybody's having to say, it just goes to show how difficult, in a school district, it is to do a five-year plan. It's difficult, more difficult, I think, than a town budget, because of, we're talking children's needs, and we never know. I mean, look what happened. If you had done a five-year plan four years ago, it would have fallen apart, because we had COVID. And so, you know, it just goes to show that it's, this is a very difficult thing to do. And I really, I appreciate that we're doing a lot of that, and I think we do, but I also want to make sure we're addressing what we really need right now, and for this year's budget, and take care of that, too. I know we have to get in the conversation about what's coming, but I also want to talk about what we're doing now, and what we're going to do for next year.
Absolutely.
You know, and, so, I understand, you know, and I understand the way to do it, but I just am concerned when, you know, we're talking so much about the future, that we're forgetting about right now. And I don't want to get off track of that.
Sure.
Because, and I know a lot of, you know, as we've been talking about, let's plan for the future, let's plan for the future, and everybody is doing that. The towns are doing that, and it's great, and I'm glad. But remember, this is our budget. It's not the town's budget until May. And once we certify it, then it's everybody's budget. But right now, this is ours. So, you know, we, we have to look at it maybe in a different way sometimes than towns do. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah. And I, and I think, look, everyone's got different perspectives, and that's kind of what brings the committee together. I think, I just don't want to be sitting here in three years and talking about laying people off because of decisions we made today. And if we're saying there's a need, if we're saying there's a need today, and we're falling into the trap of using one-time federal funding to support that need, I can assure you that we'll be sitting here in three years and we'll be cutting positions. Because the money is not going to just flow from the sky. We're not going to just find a million dollars in year four that's just going to hit us. It's just, it's not going to happen. So I, my perspect, I appreciate, we can't lose sight of what we need. I'm agreeing. What we need today, absolutely. We can't compromise that. But if we're just kicking the can down the road, and we're just hopeful that in year three, you know, the towns are just going to give us an extra couple million bucks?
No, not so far.
I just don't think that that's a realistic expen, right, well, but that's, our five-year plan is telling us, if we keep everything equal, we're depleting our E and D completely. We're using all of our federal funding, and we're going to be short a couple million dollars. So to me, that's a really big red flag, that we should be dealing with that now, because I don't think our charge is just today. I think it's longer term. But we got to, but I hear your point. We got to balance it.
Sorry about, you know, forgetting about the needs of today, too, so, you know.
I get it.
And spending so much time on what we need. And I understand that some of it can be done today. I'm not, I'm not saying that, okay? I don't want you to think that I'm not thinking.
No, and I hear your point, too. Absolutely, absolutely. And we'll, we'll follow the will of the committee. Look, if folks want to make a motion for the budget, we'll do that. It might be, we can do that tonight, we can do that whenever. So, Fred?
Two things. Uh, one, in the spirit of what Beth is saying, I agree but disagree. We have to look at what the federal funds were supplied for, and they were supplied to get us over a hump, for extraordinary expenses that we may be occurring, in order to educate children properly due to the effects from COVID. That's what we have to zero in if we're going to be using personnel. And we almost have to look at it, okay, it's a one-year, two-year, three-year plan, and wean ourselves off, because if we end up having to be looking, like you said, it's not falling out of the sky.
Okay.
The monies just won't be there. So we have to be very cognizant of that, very cognizant of our E and D. And sometimes you have to look and say, and yeah, I'm a big guy, and I like to eat, but there's only so much of a bite that I can take. You know, you have to take more than one bite, so maybe we don't bite off more than we can chew. Number one. Number two, John Stambrook, fantastic job on this. This is wonderful. The one other thing I would love to see on here, would be what we receive for any other funds, such as the CARES Act monies.
She has it.
She has it. Okay. Is it in the orange packet? The CARES Act, the, the monies that Allison Sullivan was able to get for us?
Right here, Fred.
Oh, that's...
Okay, I'm trying to be...
It's a separate thing here.
John was working on it this afternoon, Fred, after you asked last night.
Is this this?
Which one? I got so much paper.
Oh. Okay. I just didn't read far enough. We only got it right before.
Yep.
Meeting, so.
Fred?
Yeah.
Thank you, because cognizant that we received some CARES Act monies, and between Allison Sullivan and Josh Kotler and Senator Brady, was it a total of $400,000, I think, for Chromebooks?
Yes.
That they were able to supply?
Yes.
Again, thank you, folks. We appreciate our work.
So let's, so let's stay, because we'll, we'll make sure there's ample time to go, and everyone to have comments. But is there anything else relating to the ESER document that folks either have a comment or question on, concern on, anything they want to share?
I just want to say, I appreciate Hillary's input on, you know, what, what we, she can, I don't want to say foresee, but, you know, but with her experience, what we're probably going to have to hold on to, in, in relation to that. And, you know, some of that might be that, that we do need to hold on to all of those folks. They say it's a changing world. If, if it changed because of the past two, two and a half years, then that's what it is. It, it just stays that way. So it doesn't, and maybe it changes again somehow, you know, but, but if, what Lauren was speaking about with, with students, and, you know, maybe they're, they, they need to prevent it now, it can get worse later, whatever the, the situation might be. That's, it's, I mean, that's just huge. And it might never change in a different way. How many people do you hear going into stores and, you know, that they're, they're upset with this, they're upset with that, you know, oh, there's nothing here, there's nothing there, whatever? And I'm not trying to bring it in a bad sense, because I know everyone will want to get along and get some sort of semblance of, of normal. But then, normal could be diff, really different. It's just an anticipation. Sorry, it was a little bit longer.
Anything else on ESER? And, yeah, Dawn?
Sure. Jeff, can you provide some context around the summer school programming and staffing figure? It's $45,250 for, not this summer, FY22. Oh, wait, would this...
Well, no, FY will start at July 1.
Okay, so the FY23 allocation?
Is, is forty, forty-five...
$45,250.
Plus busing.
Okay.
So yes and no. They're still putting together their programming. We want to offer programming in both communities, at as many schools as we possibly can. As I caution, and I say this out loud, I don't know if I'm going to have staff. I think the, the principals have some good ideas, but I, staff right now is, is not jumping to say, I want to work this summer. But I have funding available that we can staff programs for our kids. The, the, the challenge here, it can't be necessarily, you know, playing basketball at Whitman Middle. It's got to be, address learning loss. That doesn't mean we can add, we can add a fun component to that, but it has to be related to learning loss, or enhancement of learning. So that's what people are doing. So, so for instance, like Camp Conley last year had a, had a teaching component and a recreation component. We can fund the teaching component of it. If there's a recreation component, I think it's going to have to be funded by parents.
Right. My question is, do you know how you got to that figure of $45,000? I know you say your challenge is getting staff, and that's exactly my point.
Yep.
Are you allocating maybe a thousand-dollar stipend to a teacher to do four weeks of X number of hours? Because I, I would really, to Hillary's point, like to see us reduce the number of classroom staffing positions as we look to FY23 and '24, and phase that down, and can it be used to supplement the summer school program to help those teachers who are exhausted, but maybe are interested in a summer program? Give them more. And, and, this is a summer program brochure from a surrounding town, and they're ready to go live March 1st. So with lots of programming and, and available. So I, I understand our district doesn't have a lot of staff in central office, and, you know, you're, you're trying to pull it together, but if there was a way for us as a committee to consider, you know, changing that funding piece for the summer, to get the staff in, because there is a need in the students, you know, and the families. They want that. They're looking for summer programs already. It's February vacation.
So yes, we could write an amendment. Absolutely. And I think, again, when we were writing this grant last June, we, we, we didn't have a summer program. Really, we were still trying to get kids back in. So projecting out, we can, we can fluctuate some of these numbers, as long as it pertains to learning, and Alex agrees to that from, from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We've done amendments in the past.
Right. But it would take, what, the committee to vote, to, you know, change this $45,000 figure? I guess I'm just trying to...
Not necessarily, because it's a federal grant. We're letting you know, so it's, it's money that we can move around.
Okay.
We'd like, you know, absolutely, I'd like to, if the committee wants to do this. The, as far as the, the fluctuation of these dollars, the committee's not involved when, when we write the grant. We get the grant allocated, we share it, and this is what we have. This is what we came up with this year, and I, if we can infuse more money into the LEA budget, I'm for it, if, if you feel that these folks are necessary. I'm saying that when we presented our budget last year, we presented it with coaches, interventionists, and special educators, prior to knowing the rules of ESER 3, because we couldn't get them in the LEA budget. them in the LEA budget. Everybody said, this is the number you got, and I came up with, oh, we can split the $2.3 million, three ways, and lo and behold, when, when Jeff Riley sends out the documents in June saying, hey, wait a minute, you can only use so much money in staffing, you can only use, these other areas have to be covered.
Yeah.
That's what we did, and that's what we put together. If we can infuse more, more folks, if we feel, we feel, as a committee, feel necessary for our kids, I'm all for it. My concern is that, I don't know if we're going to need, I, I hear what Hillary said about the ELs, and we see the trend, but this year was an, I want to say, an anomaly. I don't know if that's going to go up, and then we have, if, if it is, and we have to add another EL, or if it's federally funded next year through Title III, it might be able to come off. But these are things that we saw this year that we've never seen before. So using that one-time fund to, to solve a problem, as Fred said, to address things COVID-related, I think the influx of, of our ELs addresses that in, in a stretch, but if we feel as a committee we need to move these people into the EL or the district budget, I'm okay with moving, moving things around. One of the, the priorities from this committee, too, was putting the, the full-day K piece in, which we did, and the other piece that we've heard in the past, they're trying to stick to a reasonable assessment from both communities, one being a 5% increase of the assessment for the town of Whitman. We've talked about that back and forth, and that's what we tried to do in the overall scheme of that 58, 543. But I'm open to this committee, and this is why we're having this discussion, tell me where, tell me what you want me to spend, or tell me what you don't want me to spend, and I can make those changes. John's been doing documents back and forth, and we made some adjustments today even, or from the last budget presentation, we had people doubled up in Esser 3 and in the LEA budget. We need, we need to make sure that we, we don't, we didn't have that. So we've been looking line by line in the other piece, and I didn't mean to go off the Esser piece of it, but John went into every teacher, every person in the district.
Can we, can we stay on Esser? Can we just stay on it? Yeah, because I, otherwise we're going to go to a full-day K.
Yep, yep.
So, so Dawn, I guess, here's where I struggle, like, with what you just said with the summer programming. And this is goes direct, this is where I get stuck, and you guys can tell me I'm crazy and to be quiet. But if we think the summer program is something that's important, and we want it to be with us for the foreseeable future, I struggle when we say, well, we're going to fund it with Esser money for two years. What's going to happen in year three? We're going to cut the program? Like, it was really important, we wanted to do it, I agree, like, it is important, but to me, that's the stuff that should be part of our budget, not funded through one-time funds that we know is going to run out, and then we're going to sit here in year three, and we're going to be like, look at all this great stuff we added, and then we're going to cut it all away.
Now, one of the things, though, Chris, is that we've never had that in the budget, so...
No, I know, I know, but you see what I, like, this is where I struggle. I, I get so worried, we're going to do these things, we're going to feel really good, we're going to be like, hey, we did this, we did this, we did this, and then we're going to get to a future point, and we're going to, we're going to have to look at getting rid of them, because it's, I don't know how to...
The summer program piece won't be sustainable for us. You know, it won't be sustainable for us. I can tell you right now.
Yeah, I, you know, we've had summer programs for years.
Yep.
And they've been self-funded, basically.
Self-funded, yes, self-funded.
Yeah, that's a good way to do it.
And that's how they've gone. So, I, I mean, and then we have to look at what's our priority here.
Right.
You know, is, is it more important during the school year? And I understand with, you know, for summer programs and everything, I was part of one that was in Hanson for years, that we did, you know, activities, but we did learning and stuff like that, but again, self-funded, because the, I could be wrong, but the district has never funded any of the summer programs.
Very, very limited outside of special education. We fund special education programs.
Especially as one, yes, but other than that, it was not. So I, I have an issue with that, too. I'm not as worried about that as I'm worried about some of the, like the BCBA and those versus the summer program, so, you know.
Yeah, good.
I mean, if it goes, it goes, and it, you know, I mean, it has come and gone for years, and that's how, and yeah, that's sad, but is that a priority for us? That's what I'm wondering.
Right.
Or is some of these other positions more...
Right, are we going to, are we going to do a, put the summer program in the budget and then have to cut a teacher because we have a summer program?
Yeah.
Like, cut a teacher from a full-year, right, I don't want to...
And that's helpful to talk through. I just think that's, what I'm hearing Dawn say is different than, well, we're going to do the summer program for a couple years and then it'll go away. Like, I, right, that district that she pulled out has probably a comp, I don't think that...
My question really was, what makes up the 45,000?
Right.
What, what kind, what kind of staffing is that? What does, what is that affording us? But we don't have that answer yet, so...
And then F, and then Esser is good, we have until when to use it? Is it FY '24 or FY '25?
FY '24. FY '24, correct, John?
Yep.
Esser 3.
Esser 3.
31, 23, 3. I have only numbers for 25, 32.
Right.
So you can use it of summer '25.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
At Esser 3, correct.
So where do we land on this? I mean, is this, to me, I'd still like to see us rework some of this, and if you think you need it, it shouldn't be funded on Esser.
Okay.
That's, that's, but that's one, that's me, so, look into the rest of it.
Please, this is why we're having this conversation, because, again, the will of the committee, based upon the recommendations of us, what we need and what we need right now, and I am, I, I, Michelle has heard this, John has heard this, my wife has heard this, Esser has been a blessing and a curse, because it's, it's a lot of money, and they want you to spend it, and it's free money, but what do you spend it on? There's only so many one-time purchases we can do. So we looked at it last year to solve a problem that we had in special education services and, and remediation, so to speak, or identifying learning loss. And that's continued. We've tried to move some people into the budget, and again, I can rework this, and we can, we can move some of those things into the budget if, if the committee feels it's essential.
Yep.
Um, so could we, and this is for John, I'm sorry, so maybe for next time we talk about this, the docu, like, we get documents that reflect the two ELs, the BCBA and the Tech Coach into the budget, and then one that puts all seven of them into the budget? Does that make sense? I just, speaking, speaking from experience, the Tech Coach is kind of an important piece, especially because everyone's one-to-one, as Jeff said. I could see that as something that kind of goes either way, but I will tell you that it's, it's a lot. But I just think seeing that visually, right? I don't know, does anyone?
Okay. So I, my concern is, Jeff, you put them out, then what is the money? Are you going to take some things out of the LEH so that we can spend the money here?
I could show you two different scenarios.
Because, that's my concern, because now you're adding to the budget, which we've already said, we've tried to cut back and trying to cut back a little bit, which is, you know, a concern. So what's our exchange going to be? That's, that's what I'm wondering. I mean, if you're going to put those positions and there's that $595,000, what can, you know, I don't want it wasted, but what?
What can we spend on?
Things that you can use it for? That's my concern. You're, you know what I'm saying? I realize things are only for, you know, what are we going to do after 2000, you know, '24, but it, when you take those out, can you take stuff out of the budget to fill that? Why not? Because if you can't, then we have wasted money sitting here, and that's my, you know, that's what I'm trying to figure out. I don't understand how to do that.
Dawn, you had something?
Yeah, I remember from a discussion at MASC conference about this specifically, and one school didn't have certain curriculum directors or chairs, I don't know, Jeff, if you remember this. So they elevated some teachers to that curriculum sort of oversight position temporarily for two to three years, sort of reworked, you know, just run that position, look at their curriculum and so forth. They filled that teaching position with Esser money with the knowledge that this would give them that time to set a curriculum, set a plan, an education plan, and then when the funds went away, that curriculum position went away.
But that teacher had to come back to a job.
Well, it was probably a stipended position. It was probably a stipend position, so like, some districts don't have...
Yeah, they already had stipend curriculum coordinators there.
So I, I think you're right, though. I mean, those are the things that we can, again, it's, it's an idea, if you, for the next meeting, would it be March 2nd or March 9th? But remember, we were looking at March 16th as setting the budget, and I know, you know, the subcommittee's going to be talking over the next couple, couple of weeks as well. I can place this in, if that's the will of the committee, and kind of show you the scenarios of either moving some of those coaches out, or moving some other things out to try to balance that off even more, but I, I don't know that right now, off the top of my head, what that would look like.
Who do you want to go next?
So, any other questions on Esser?
I mean, those...
Well, I'm from the public.
Yeah.
We're going to move off of it.
So, Randy Lamontilla, Selectmen Town of Whitman. Just because I didn't get an answer the last time, and just for clarification, when the towns funded your budget and you certified a budget, 775,000 was used out of Esser 3. Are we saying that was not the case now?
It was used out of Esser 2 and 3 for FY '22.
Okay. And just as an FYI, I guess, if you read into the ARPA funding, a certain proportion actually has to go to summer programs, so...
Yes.
That, that's probably why that's in there.
ARPA is towns, not, ARPA is towns, not schools?
Yes, or 3, Mark. Yeah.
They're two different schools.
I say ARPA.
Okay, okay.
Got it, you're, you're right.
And it also has to go to mental health as well. There has to be an apportionment to mental health, those are some of the, so that, some of the constraints. So no more questions on 28?
No.
John, if you want to, can you come up and talk about Doc 27, since you prepared that, the special ed document? With some assumptions, here we are.
So this is a response to one of the questions from the, whenever, we've had so many meetings, whatever, one of the meetings where we wanted to have some more, um, more data or on the assumptions that we're, that we're using on the special education budget. So I broke out every line that special education related, and then put the assumptions at the top of it, and you can see what they are. Thirty-nine students will be placed in out-of-district placements in '23, a 3% increase for collaborative out-of-district placements, tuition costs in '23, 673 total students. We've got a new budget line for ELL interpretation and curriculum expenses. Not saying what the percentage of the increase, but there is a percentage in for teachers and paraprofessionals, because their contracts are up. And finally, speech teachers and BCBA's are classified as district-wide. So I, I don't know if this, from the question from the, from the last meeting, I, this is what I kind of came up as a response to that of seeing more documentation on the SPED-related items, so, um, you can go through every, whatever lines or...
Does it, does anyone have questions on that document?
John, can you, so can you just kind of recap the total special education expenditures kind of over the last couple of years, few years here? Is that at the bottom of the sheet?
So the bottom of the sheet, yep. So fiscal year '21's actuals, it's bottom of page 2 in the, in the column under FY ' '21 actual, and so I'm going to round the numbers off, 11.1 million. Then there was a slight, a small amount of encumbrances left, left over that we brought into fiscal year '22. Right now, the appropriated amount is 11.7 for fiscal year '22, and so far through January, oh, that, that was another thing, too, with all the documents we have here, the February 2nd documents were through December, but I updated them all through January, because we, I had January's numbers. So through January, it's 6.06 million, 6.07 million. The FY '23 budget on all those are 10.649 million, but also, you have to remember that we've taken back on page 1 in the, probably a quarter of the way down, we took under, under revenues, that includes a 1.720 million removal of the budget for the circuit breaker amount that we're going to be using from '22 in '23. So it's 10.649, if you were looking for the exact amount, you would add 10.649 plus 1.7, 11.3, again, with a round number.
12.3, that's right. And so I think this is, this is important to understand for two reasons. One, your assumptions are on the top left. So now we have this within kind of our living documents of, these are the assumptions. So for example, if you forecast a 3% increase for collaborative out-of-district placements in FY '23, and through the world evolving at 7%, then that's going to create a deficiency. There should be transparency around what that deficiency is, and then we'll figure out, you know, how we would fund that. So that's important. And then to your point, because this jumped right off the page, right? It looks like our special education expenditures are going down by a million dollars, when to John's point, they're actually, because of the way we're now utilizing circuit breaker, they're still actually going up a significant amount. So those are the two big takeaways. I think this is super helpful to have, because it kind of hopefully starts to put a bow tie on those circuit breaker discussions we previously had, so...
So, so one of the things, too, with, with special education, it's, it's an ever-evolving process, and, and, you know, a, a kid, I don't even say, a kid can move in. We can have a team meeting tomorrow with a student, and a one-to-one can be assigned to them. You've seen an uptick in, in our pairs this year because of that. You've seen behaviors in just support pairs. That can change. Lauren and I had a conversation today about out-of-district placements, and her out-of-district placement budget fluctuated between, between $200,000 and $300,000 in a plus or minus over the past two months, because of estimations of kids coming in or, or a change in placement. So special education, I give Lauren a lot of credit, is the toughest area to budget because it's unforeseen. You don't know, and you, we follow the letter of the law as far as putting a student on an IEP or an individual education plan. There's a process for that. Not everybody qualifies, and sometimes parents get upset, but that means they qualify for extra services. That's why when I talked about the co-teaching model at Whitman Middle and making sure we have supports for those students, so that they don't end up in a, a program, and they're being supported through their IEPs, they don't have to have a pair. The programs that we've put in over the, the past four years, and Lauren alluded to those programs at the last budget meeting, have been essential in trying to keep kids back in district, and the two pieces at the bottom of that budget, those two staff members that Lauren's asking for, if those don't get approved in this budget, she has to move her out-of-district budget more, because those are essential, those students will be out-of-district next year if we don't put those two in, if those aren't in this district budget. So to me, those are going to be essential in this budget if I have to move things around, because I don't want, I want our kids in district. Those two are essential to the, to, to maintain our students in, in, in our community. So any other questions on, on SPED? The, let me, hang on just a second, Dawn. I didn't notice number three in assumptions. I looked, I had Lisa Forbes look back. We're looking at seven, or 673 this year for students. Last year, it was close to 665. Pre-COVID, we were in the 640s, okay? So we've jumped about 30 students. That could be a combination of our EL population as well, because EL sometimes are, are special education, and they qualify for that. So those numbers, they're not jumping by 40, but we have seen that increase since COVID, and I'm, I'm hoping that they level off to the, to the 630, 640 that they were from 2011 to 2018, because we aren't seeing an increase in students. We're seeing a decrease in students, but we're seeing an increase in student needs, which cost more than a general education student. I'm sorry to cut you off, Dawn, I apologize.
Okay.
My question is, after we use the 1.7 million that we're required to because we cannot carry that balance, what's remaining in the circuit breaker account? So, I don't know if I'm phrasing that right.
Nothing. So, John, that 1.7 million will be after we file in July. You'll get four checks, right, October, whatever?
So, the 1.7 million is what's projected to be in the fund at the end of fiscal year 22. It's the amount we require to spend in 23. We haven't filed for 23 yet, so we don't know what the 20, we haven't filed for the end of 22 yet, so we don't know what 23's numbers will be. I've projected a number of 1.8 million. That is literally just a projection. I just, I put a number on a page on one of the sheets there, and that's why I highlighted it because there's no way to know that.
So, does that, so the projection is 1.8? So, if everything goes as projected, then at the end of the fiscal year, we would have 1.8 million even though we spent the 1.7?
Yes.
And we'll start the process again next year?
If my, I'm going to say, if my guess is correct.
Right.
And that is just a guess.
So, we will start, like, the school year September with a cushion, if you will, or a balance of 1.8 after having used the 1.7?
So, 1.7 million will be at the end of fiscal year 22. And then we'll go into 23, and through the course of 23, we'll spend that 1.7 million. We'll charge, on special education costs, at the end of the year, it won't be in the general fund budget.
But at the same time that that money's going out.
There'll be new money coming in.
Which you are anticipating if we don't spend it, it's being around 1.8 million.
Again, yes, but it's, we haven't filed for it, we haven't got the numbers together. It's just a projection.
Okay. I'm still trying to visualize this moving piece because if I understand correctly, we, as a district, we are allowed to carry a balance for a year. So, are we doing that by using this 1.7 million? And what's the balance that we're carrying? Not including the reimbursement that will be coming in?
So, we're required to use the 1.7 that we'll have at the end of fiscal year 22 by the end of fiscal year 23, or it would go to the general fund. So, but we're going to do that in quarterly increments for, during 23, we'll be taking that 1.7 million that we've already accounted for. But also, in fiscal year 23, once we file our 22 final numbers for SPED reimbursement on the circuit breaker, we'll be getting money.
Right, for the prior years.
So, we'll get $450,000 a quarter if my.
So, there's a starting balance in the account, right?
Yes.
As of?
It's not like it's going to go to zero on July 1.
There's 1.7 in, 1.7 coming in, and then by the time we get a year later, then we would anticipate.
It'll be 1.8.
So.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think I, similar to regional transportation, you spend last year's money the following year.
Yes.
It's easiest way to.
We don't have to, right? We can hold that one-year balance.
That's why I'm asking this.
And I think, Don, to Don's point, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what Don's asking is, when we had that whole three-hour meeting about circuit breaker, one of the things we talked about was how sometimes it's a rainy day fund, right? We have an unfocused expense. So, will there be money in our circuit breaker for that? If for some reason, this wouldn't happen, but if tuitions go up in January and we suddenly need, you know, $250,000, would we have money in the circuit breaker for that if we're spending this 1.7 here?
Yes, I think the superintendent talked about that, and that was one of his concerns, was we'll be using the money that's going to be coming in in 23 to do anything else, you know, any more one-time things that come out of.
So, we will have money for one-time?
Yes.
Yeah, but that being said, there won't be that total amount to put into FY24.
Right, but I think.
But there will be a cushion.
Yeah.
But, but.
I don't want it to be zero in September, waiting for that first quarterly reimbursement.
So, that's not possible. If you start with 1.7, and there's 1.7 coming in and 1.7 going out, then you kind of have to finish with 1.7.
Okay.
Right?
It's just ironic that.
But that being said, the concern I have is looking.
But that's by design.
At the FY24 budget, if for some reason, out of that 1.8, we use 500,000 for expenses, it'll be a 1.3 number that we can apply to the FY24 budget. Potential.
Potential.
But then we would get reimbursed for that more, that extra money that we spent, we would get reimbursed again.
For the next year, yes, yes.
So, it's always kind of, right, John, am I saying it right? I mean, the one, it isn't, John's point is spot-on, like, oh, that's kind of weird that it's the same, but it's by design, right? We know the balance is 1.7, we can only have that as a balance. That's our maximum allowed.
Yes.
We're going to spend the 1.7, we know that's coming in. Next year, it might be 1.8 we're going to spend because we got 1.8 in, and that's the maximum we can carry.
And I will try one more time. So, it's, let's fast forward to September 30th, 2022. We're going to take out whatever 1.7 million is divided by 4. I'm going to use that for SPED expenses because that's what we've done in this budget. But we'll also get fiscal year 23's first quarter payment of, I don't know what that number will be, but if I just put a number out of 1.8 million, if that were to be true, we would get $450,000 on September 30th. So, we would take 1.720 divided by 4, whatever that number is, but we'd also get the first quarter payment, so the, and that'll happen every quarter. So, we won't ever be in the spot where we're zero and something happens and we can't go anywhere. That won't happen unless the state stops paying us on a quarterly basis, or the state goes bankrupt.
But then we don't have our Chapter 70 money either, so.
Then we have a lot bigger problems.
Does that make, does that?
Does that make sense?
Because I think you're spot-on with why you're asking and making sure that you're comfortable, but I want to make sure we've answered.
I just didn't see that here. There's a lot of numbers and.
It's not going out the door July 1. It's going to be phased out and phased in.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Sean.
Sorry, quick question. Sean Kane, 31 Forest Street. He said he just put in the 1.8 as a guess, roughly. But, it was an estimate, but, well, I guess I want to talk about that in a little bit more depth, just quickly. We get reimbursed for the students as they be in service right now for this year. So, September, October, November, December, January, February, there's already been six months of the school year, and we already know the students, that the services they've received. So, of the 10 months of the school year, seven of them are already in the books that we can quantify. And then there's three more that we kind of estimate. So, we can kind of estimate fairly.
Pretty accurate.
So, it doesn't, I don't know if that's what you use for your 1.8, or, because that does kind of zero in, it's different than, we got 1.7 roughly, so let's just make it 1.8. That's different than literally calculating the seven months as of right now, and then knowing that there's three more months that are going to be on that reimbursement form. You know what I mean? So, we can get a pretty good prediction of that circuit breaker.
Okay. I just don't feel you can really do anything but make an educated guess until you do your end of year.
Yeah.
You know, because you don't know what can happen in the next three months as well. So, it's nice to hear the guess or the estimate, but, you know, the end-of-year report, that's what gives us the accuracy.
Any other questions on that document there? You know, hearing that we might want to move some of the ESER folks into the district budget, I kind of look at, I don't know, maybe we can just go to Document Number 5 right now and just give you a prelim where we're at with, after making some adjustments to the assessments, when we found a couple of calculation mistakes. And again, bear with John and I, we've gone through this a lot, and names are, we try to do this best we can and give you the most accurate information. We found another doubled up today. So, on Document 5, we adjusted, again, using the bottom-line budget of 58, 553, 037.
Is it labeled? I'm sorry.
Document 5 is.
We're looking at an assessment for the Town of Hanson at 4.51, and the Town of Whitman at 3.67. That would be including full-day K, or all of those pieces on this green sheet, on this orange slide here to make this budget using half of E&amp;D.
Say that again, what were those numbers, Jeff? On Document 5 here?
On Document 5.
Oh, sorry, 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 percent.
On Document 5, we're just looking at the assessment piece. Because if I move, either remove full-day K or add those positions, and those assessments will differ. These are the assessments right now. If we service the budget at 58, 543, 037, using half of E&amp;D for full-day K and the $400,000 for Chromebooks, these would be the assessments for the town. 3.67451. That being said, hearing what the committee wanted a little bit, those are going to shift because I'm going to have to move some things around. Do you want to call on Chris, or can I call on Chris?
Sorry, sorry. I'm trying to get to the, what I was trying to do, Jeff, was compare, how did, what changed?
That's what I was asking.
I was trying to go to the old Document 5.
The old document, the old document was more, we found, I doubled up. There were two people, there was a person in ESER, and there were two people, both in ESER and both in the district budget when we presented on the night.
So, it went from, in the first budget packet, Hanson's assessment, you want to just do the increased percentages?
That's what I was.
From 5.74 to 4.51.
Correct.
And Whitman's went from 5.16 to 3.67.
That's correct.
So, those are really big jumps. Is that what you're reading?
That's, yes.
That's using half of our E&amp;D.
That's using half of E&amp;D, or not half of E&amp;D, the recommended amount of $370,000 of E&amp;D for full-day K, half of that, and the $400,000 for Chromebooks, and the 125 for the Whitman water bill. That would be the assessment to the towns.
What do we do next year?
Was that in that original Doc 5, or did that, did you change any of those variables?
John, you can answer that. No. All the new documents are live. The new packet is live.
So, I guess, I'm just trying to, I want to make sure we're all following along from where were we and what changed and why, right? So, the original Document 5 that I have in front of me had those different assessments and increases. So, what I'm asking, and Jeff just said, the new one that we got has 370,000 in E&amp;D for full-day K, 400,000 for the Chromebook, and 160,000 for the water bill?
Yep.
Okay.
Those were the original numbers, too.
Okay, so, so then the question becomes, help us underst, what, how did, why did those change?
I had the two positions, two and a half positions that are in ESER 3 were also in the district budget when I presented on the second, on the third.
Okay.
So, we were able to, going through again, person by person, we identified that, and that was able to lower the assessment.
Sorry, so I saw, I lost track. It was Chris, are you all set? Or you're good?
That was my question.
And then Hillary and Don.
How much do we have in E&amp;D right now? So, if, so Jeff just said 370 for full-day K, 400,000 for the Chromebooks, and 160 for the water bill, which I know that one's going away soon.
So, Document?
I think it's Document 3, but I don't have it with me.
Pick up, John, I can't hear you.
I think it's Document 3. It has the assumptions, and down on the bottom, it has what we have for E&amp;D. I'm looking for it now, if I can grab it out.
Because I don't know if we want to jump there. I think I might be cutting you off.
Yes, it is Document 3.
Document 3 is our E&amp;D.
Everybody's saying 160 for the water bill, it's 120.
It's 123.
123, 885, is that what it is?
Down the bottom, we're, under C, it says access and deficiency usage in fiscal year 23. So, we started out with 1.8 million, and those are the three things. 123, 885 for Whitman water bill, 370 or so for the half of the full-day K, and 400,000 for Chromebooks. That'll leave a, if we were to do that, that would leave a balance in E&amp;D of 974,000.
So, I guess my question is perhaps the elephant in the room, but how are we going to fund full-day K after this budget cycle? I am certainly in support of tuition-free full-day K. I have significant concerns about using E&amp;D. I didn't know, I think Justin Evans brought it up at our last meeting, that we will not be reimbursed for these students in Chapter 70 funds because of our hold harmless. So, I don't, it's 750,000, 748. Do we have a plan? Like, do we have a document here somewhere that gives us a next-year thing? Because again, this goes back to, that money is going to have to come from somewhere in FY24, and my concern is that we would be cutting off our nose to spite our face in cutting somewhere else to provide this service, which is certainly a service that we need, but we need to be able to fund it. And I don't, I don't know, is there a document?
Well, Hillary, you have to remember, it's not going to be that much the next year.
Why not?
Because that's its startup cost.
So, I'm looking at, so Beth, I'm looking at.
Chairs and all that, and you're not going to have that.
So, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. So, if we go to Document 16, it's, yeah, we looked at it last time, right? So, if we go, it's halfway through, it's the five-year plan. Full-day K in year 1 is 740, 740,000, I'm rounding up, 741,000. In year 2, it's 763,000, and year 3, it's 785,000, so.
Wow.
It's increasing. Salary increasing.
I have a 3% increase in there.
But I thought it was, if it's startup cost, doesn't that include the, you know, setup, the chairs and all that stuff? Not for full day.
So, we, I'm not concerned about furniture. We have the classroom space right now that we can add, and we have enough furniture. But it's.
So, then I was told something different, okay.
We should, this is all people right now. Now, this, the document that's not numbered, I had John do this document as well. It's the last piece that we came out, I came out with three different scenarios for you.
Can you help me find that?
You will wear.
Michelle gave it to you tonight.
Okay.
You have it?
So, so.
You're the one that needs it.
So, three scenarios again. Depending on what this committee wants to push out as a final budget number and an assessment number, and what you want to use for E&amp;D specifically around that, the elephant in the room, the largest cost we have as far as full-day K. If we, based on the new numbers I gave you today with the assessment that was lowered because of the error, that's Scenario 2. You saw a 740, 807 with an E&amp;D usage of 360, and an assessment to the Town of Whitman of 3.67, and the Town of Hanson at 4.51. Without using any E&amp;D in Scenario 1, the assessment from the Town of Whitman increases to 5.07, and to the Town of Hanson at 5.66. Again, the overall budget is at 3.07. And then Scenario 3, we use all of, you know, all of E&amp;D, and the Town of Whitman's assessment goes to 2.28 and 3.35, which isn't going to be necessarily sustainable. So, again, it's what's the overall number that we as a committee are looking for. If we remove that full-day K piece from the budget, I have to rework all those numbers because that will then maybe include those people, because that's a $700,000 piece that we've added and built our assessments upon.
Don, yeah?
I have a few questions. But, full-day kindergarten, we are so far behind on this. It is a recurring position, and it should not be funded with one-time money out of E&amp;D. Our E&amp;D is 1.8 million. It could be legally held upwards of 2.6 million. We can retain a balance of 5% of our operating budget for our own emergency use if needed in the future, perhaps to avoid a fiscal cliff coming in FY25. I don't know, and I don't remember what our Student Opportunity Act plan was that was filed, but I did go back and read some guidance, and it's from Commissioner O'Reilly. Document, I'll be happy to share it. It's the description of examples of programs identified by DESI for the Student Opportunity Act, which is the funding that is coming available. And this came out in the winter of 2020. We know what happened then. So, this outlines, the commissioner is encouraging the adoption of priority programs in below. Number 1, expanded access to full-day, high-quality, pre-kindergarten for four-year-olds. It specifically says four-year-olds. And here we are deciding to use whether or not to use one-time money for kindergarten. There are neighboring towns that are building schools, Easton in particular, building a school for preschool right now to fund that. I want to go back to the change in the budget amount. It's a reduction of 396,554. You said it was two positions?
We found two and a half positions, so yes.
Okay. Bear with me because I wrote a note. So, there's a change in the instruction line. I just looked at the Document 16. This was the original one from last week. So, on the expenditure functions, instructions you had for FY23, 32,344,000. And then the new Document 4 has 31.9. So, that's, that's really a huge reduction of.
Document 16 for 23 has 31.9. Document 16, the new document, and I think those are equal, too.
But, Don, are you asking, but it was 32.3?
Yeah. Yeah. What's that?
Are you asking, it was 32.3 and?
Yeah, the, the original budget presented, the instructions was 32,344,000. Now, it is 31,927. So, I guess I'm asking, it's, two people has to be more than.
I, I know what we found. We might have, we might have made a couple other adjustments, Don. I know we found two and a half people from ESTER. John, do you want to jump in? I'm not sure.
I have a list. Never change.
He's driving him into it, too.
I just really want to know what we cut.
I, we, you didn't, it wasn't a cut. I didn't cut anything. I'm telling you, I'll be very, I didn't cut anything in this budget. I put everything in that we, that I feel we need right now. I didn't move anything around. They were mistakes in, in the, in the numbers because of the fact we were bouncing people from ESTER II and ESTER III into the LEA budget. So, it was a reduction that we found the other day. I haven't cut any services.
Okay.
But I wanted to be transparent in the fact that, you know, we made, we had a couple mistakes in the last, in the last presentation. So.
And, Don, and I don't know if it helps, but one of the, because this is directly tied to that, one of the questions I had was, in the old documents, like, why did we go from 30.4 million instruction to 32? Like, why did we jump $2 million in instruction from one year to the next? So, it sounds like your answer is, we didn't, we just, the math was wrong?
Not necessarily. We did jump in because I.
Well, but no, now you're going from 30.4 to 31.9. So, it's.
Yes.
It's not, it's not a $2 million jump.
No, it's not.
It's a one and a half million.
And to answer your question, total, different, when Mr. Tuffy put those four teachers in that we approved in '20, in, he had them in the, the line item under the superintendent's account, and you notice in that, in the line items, he moved the 280,000 into instruction when John did it, because when those teachers came on board, they were remote teachers last year, and they didn't have a building assigned to them. So.
Right, but we had the funds.
Well, we had the funds, but they weren't in instruction. So, you saw a jump of 280,000 in instruction, and you saw a decrease. The, the funds were always there, it's just the percentages of, of where they were coming from. So, when I saw that number as well, and I said, well, why did I have $280,000 cut from my, my area? It was those four staff members, because last year, when they started, they were teaching remote school. They weren't assigned to, the two of them that are in Duval now in FY '23, the one that's in Conley, the one that's in Indian Head. So, again, the line items this year are extremely challenging because we had so many folks teaching outside the classroom last year. So, you do see that jump. But I will tell you right now, that those numbers that I gave John were, that we didn't eliminate, didn't cut anything from this budget. We reduced based upon the numerical errors or the double-ups that we found in, in the original presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Quick question, Beth?
Yes. So, a couple of questions for you that, just in the general budget look at. On the Chromebooks, remind me, like, I know this is the first year we're trying to do, you know, so what would it be next year?
So, we didn't put anything in the Chromebooks for FY '23, okay? We will have to recycle an approximate of Chromebooks in FY '26. But we, we are looking for 400,000 this year in, in the budget from E and D.
Yeah.
And another chunk of change from the Fed, so that we can recycle ours that are going offline, and George has the numbers, in June of 2022.
Right.
The next time is going to be June of '26.
But I, I think I remember it wouldn't be as much.
So, so what we, we need to do in the new fiscal, not '23, '24, '25, '26, is allocate a certain amount of money in the district budget or E and D, depending on where we're at, to make sure we have that. The challenge with that piece is, I can't necessarily ask the communities to offset the Chromebook piece, because we won't be using 225 or 275 every year. We have to make that purchase in '26. So, we have to figure out a way, and we're trying to figure that out, how we can allocate the funds, so that it doesn't roll over and it's just a, a line item, hey, Chromebooks in FY '24, that will go into E and D at the end of the year, because I don't think that's going to sit well. But no, we will be okay if, if we appropriate the 400,000 in E and D this year, which I think we have the amount. But we will have to start looking at '24, '25, '26 to see. Now, the Fed was giving away money this year for Chromebooks. I don't know if they're going to continue to do that, because Google has taken a monopoly on Chromebooks and has changed their licensing agreements. So, there might be some lawsuit in the future. But right now, I'm going to be good for this year, and the next reboot, and, you know, I know, Mr. Small, you've talked about capital items, 2026 might be a capital item that we're looking at Chromebooks, you know, for the district. We would rather put it in the operating budget, but we're not doing it this year.
Okay. How many new kindergarten teachers would have to come in to play?
Three. So, three new staff, three new pairs, and three new kindergarten teachers. And that's including the change from the revolving account. So, we have two classrooms at Conley, two classrooms at, at Indian Head, or three classrooms at Indian Head, and two classrooms at Duval.
Okay, so that accounts for the 740.
That's the 740, correct.
How much are we?
Hold on, Fred, hold on, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I use knowledge?
Uh, no, go ahead.
Stop, go, big up.
How much are we currently spending on half-day K? Because that's in the operating budget.
So, I have two teacher, or two, or one half, no, one half-day classroom at, at each school. Total of 78 kids.
Okay.
And each of those classrooms has one pair, the pair just stays both halves. But we are, it's not a lot, but if we do move to full day K, we will drop that afternoon bus run in the morning. It's not a lot of money, but we will drop that, that, that bus run in the morning, or in the afternoon for those half-day kids.
And wouldn't, instead of being part of that new setup cost, wouldn't the, there be an overlap with the current teachers for half-day K that are in the operating budget?
Yeah, those, those, those teachers right now, the, the way it's set up now is, this is, this is what the principals told me I'd have to dig in deep. That's the actual cost. I don't want to, I, I, I don't want to misspeak. That's what they told me they would need.
So, the 740 is net inclusive?
Yes.
Fred's question is, are you sure?
Okay.
Yes, I am sure.
Right.
We're adding X amount of percent in our projection.
This is it. It's a good question. The other staff are in the budget already. This is what they've told us and itemized what they need. John, do you want to answer that question? You have that?
Hang on, give me a second to find it. Okay, incremental cost.
How many can, I'm going to ask this, how many kindergarten teachers do you have?
Hold on, hold on.
Mr. Cal.
I got a, I got a stack of mic and then.
So, right now, the, the existing personnel that are paid from the revolving fund, 490, 807, 27, that's the FY '23.
Okay, so that says total new FY '23 general fund expenditures. What I'm saying is, okay, the existing personnel you have paid from the revolving fund.
So, I, I, I can answer that question for you right now. So, right now, what they've said is, I have a half-day class, I have, a half-day class at each school.
Yeah.
Morning at Conley is 17. Rough number, 15 to 17. Afternoon at Conley is 17. They, that one teacher will now teach those 17 that were in the morning. I need an additional teacher to teach the afternoon.
Understood.
Gotcha. Same thing at every school. I thought last year, at this time last summer, looking at the enrollment in the summertime, I thought we wouldn't have to add a teacher. I thought the enrollment in the half-day program was under 20 in each program. It did not. We're trying to keep these kindergarten classes between 17 and 20, 22 being the max. So, that's the need for that additional staff. That half-day K teacher will teach, say, the morning session of their, what they have now currently of 17 to 18 kids. The new teacher is going to take their afternoon session in full day.
Okay, but where is the, where is it accounted for the existing half-day teacher that's now going to be teaching a full-day class?
So, like, if you look at this chart, right? Is this where you're going, Fred? So, it says there's five teachers and three paraprofessionals for $490,000 that already exist.
Right.
Already exist. And then there's 250,000 that we need to pay in addition.
Right.
So, Fred's, I think, saying, he sees the 740 coming in, but where's the 490 coming out?
Yeah, you already, we're already paying the 490, right?
Correct.
So, isn't it just 250?
No, those are.
Well, we're paying that 490s coming from the revolving fund.
Tuition, it's coming from tuition.
From tuition.
Tuition.
So, where, where are the teachers?
Our existing teachers?
That are coming from the operating budget?
Duval staff, Conley staff, Indian Head staff. They're in the operating budget right now.
Correct, but where are they on this page? Because currently, they're being paid to teach kindergarten. And from what I can gather, you're telling me, we need eight teachers and six pairs for our program.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Those are add-ons. Those are coming, those are the, the five that are coming out of the revolving fund, and the three additionals.
But we won't have the revolving fund anymore.
And that's why. In our operating budget, as we've had it for years.
How many total kindergarten teachers will we have?
Eight.
If we start full day K?
No, no. We're going to add, total of eight. We have 11.
So, we're going to have 11?
11 full-day K teachers.
Okay, so there's a cost associated with the other three.
They're in the operating budget now.
That are in the operating budget now, but they're not accounted for in the increase of our carrying costs, because it's not going to cost us 740,000 a year, for this year. It's going to cost us more. They're already in the operating budget, but yet we don't have a mechanism to carry forward what the increased cost, the total increased costs are. And that 740 is not an accurate number. Granted, the operating budget would go down with the removal of them, but the kindergarten budget would go up, the full day K. I'm just saying, we need to see it all in real numbers and in total people, so to speak.
So, we could, I would, so what you're asking is, basically, I would take the three teachers that are paid for out of the operating budget now and put them into this.
Correct. And then the operating budget would go down.
Would go down. But I.
Appropriately.
The, the challenge with that is, I, by law, I have to have those three in the budget. Like, I have to have half-day K. I can't move, you know. So, yeah, I'd have to slide them back.
Or at least, you know, another column that could show that area.
Does that make, does that make sense? I can do that.
I think the essence of the question is, are we double counting anything?
No.
And your answer is no.
No.
How we change the formatting, I don't know. But if, if you're saying, we haven't double counted it, and we can move it over here and put it over here, but it's still the same bottom-line number?
But if we tell, if we tell the public that the cost for our full-day K program.
To start, to start.
To start is 740,000. That's not accurate, because it's more than that.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. I hear you. I got Mike and then you, Chris, sorry.
Is that, oh, I'm sorry, Mike.
You're all right. So, just to sum it up, so, from this year to next year, this passed and went through, you're adding how many full-time teachers from this year? Like, from what, we have staff now for kindergarten, you would be adding, are you saying three teachers?
I, I would be adding three additional teachers outside. So, so I have three in the operating budget. Five are paid for from revolving.
Just, I guess, just the add?
For, for kindergarten?
Mm-hmm.
Three additional.
And three paraprofessionals.
Correct.
Okay. So, the only add that we have would be those six personnel?
Yeah. So, it says.
For full day K, hold on, hold on, hold on. For full day K.
Right, so, so that's where you're coming up with the $250,000 increase, right?
I'm, I'm.
I'm just going off of document 20.
I got, I have document 20 sitting there. You can have it by.
Okay, yes.
So, three, three you're adding, as of between, from this year to next year, you're adding six people, three teachers, three paraprofessionals. So, I guess where I'm struggling is, we're, we're next year, so I'm seeing, all I can find is a $250,000 increase.
Yep.
So, I don't, so if we're saying, hey, kindergarten's going to cost $740,000 more than this year, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm having trouble. I think where Fred is coming in.
No.
It's revolving, yeah.
So, we collect, so we collect all those tuitions?
So, you're minusing the tuition.
So, the 490,000 is the tuition offset that we're not going to have.
Okay.
We're not going to have it anymore.
One second, one second. I got you next, Chris.
Yep.
Does that make sense, Mike? I was starting.
Uh, yeah.
I can get it now.
Yeah, better. Yeah.
Okay, Chris, go ahead. Sorry. Thank you for waiting patiently.
Um, yeah, so as I understand it, these are, the way this is written on this piece of paper, is they're additional expenditures. We, we, like Jeff just said, we have to have those other positions in the budget. We haven't decided to do this yet formally. So, we have to account for the other positions that will absorb into full day K in the budget. So, if we were to take those positions and put it on a proposal and take it out of the budget, would actually be misrepresenting the actual budget.
No, but if you want to know what the total cost of full day K is, you have to.
Yeah, I think, I think it could certainly, it could certainly be presented that way.
I'm not saying that we shouldn't get an accurate assessment, you know, figure on, on what it's going to cost. I'm just saying, to do it the way you said it.
Yeah.
But those are going to go back.
Yeah, I think it's just, it's the semantics of how it's being presented. So, if you're saying the incremental cost to add full day K to the district is 740, that's one way of saying it. If Fred wants, and I think it's a perfectly fine way to say it, the total cost of the full-day program at Whitman-Hanson is.
Yes.
That's a million dollars, then it's a million dollars.
Yep.
And Chris, are you?
Yeah, that's all. That's all. I just wanted to make that point.
I got Hillary and then.
And then I had to follow up.
Hillary and then, yep, go ahead. Anyone over here? No, okay. Throw something at me.
If we, so the, the 490 is strictly from parent tuition, the 35, 3250, or whatever it costs, that 490 is strictly from?
It's tuition, is correct, John?
Tuitions?
Yes.
Okay. Um, my second question is, if we put this in, we still have to offer half-day K, correct?
No.
No.
No, the, the parent, so, so the law is, is that the districts have to have a kindergarten pro, have to have a half-day. So, if a parent chooses the half-day, they will be enrolled in the full day, and they can move their.
But they would have to provide transportation and all that stuff?
Correct. The pickup, yes.
Because I was just wondering if that would mean more personnel as well, if we had to.
No, we do not. We have to, if we offer a full-day program, parents can choose a half-day if they want to. It'll be the morning session, it won't be the afternoon session. We will dictate to that, because they don't have an opportunity. That will be the program that we'll, we'll design for them.
So, then, so we have 78 students this year who are half-day. Do we know why they chose half-day? Is it because they couldn't get into full day? Is it because of family choice? You know, I think, I think one of the flaws, I mean, even, the flaw is that we have to pay for full-day K.
I'm sure. It was, it's expensive.
At $10,000, $10,000 for three kids, whatever. Works for my family, it is what it is, but not everybody's in that situation, right?
Sure.
Um, but the other flaw, I think, is that if there is a family that is willing to pay, and the classes are full, they cannot get in. And that is a huge problem. And so, there's a lot to unpack with this, but if, if this doesn't work, we need to fix that, right? I, I think, because we need to provide opportunities to these students, and if financially it's not going to work, and however it is now, we have to come up with a way that if there is a student, if there is a family that is willing to pay and can, they should be, they should be able to get there. They should be, have a spot. And, and that's not been the case, and, and that's really problematic.
No, there, there hasn't been, we haven't had a lottery for a while.
We haven't had a lottery.
Since my son was in kindergarten, there was a lottery.
There was a lottery.
2011, the year.
He's in third grade, so there was a lottery that year.
Last few years, there has not.
Sure, I think that, I mean, being that my daughter's in kindergarten this year, I know that a lot of her friends' families, because they're working from home, because, you know, because it costs $3,300 and someone might be out of work, they, they made that choice for their family. I think that things have changed. But I also know that there are families who perhaps would have liked to have done it, and were knocked out of a lottery because, you know.
I, I don't, what I'm saying is, they've had the opportunity in recent years. They haven't had to have the lottery, which is a good thing. So, anybody who wanted to pay haven't been able to pay and get in.
The, the problem that we've had over the past couple of years is people signing up late and going on a waiting list.
That's so nice.
And, and that be, that becomes an issue when a family moves into town, and, and we've had multiple move-ins, and they go on a waiting list. We have been able to flex people to say, oh, you moved into the new places behind Whitman Middle School, but I have a spot in Indian Head. So, you know, you're not in your home school. So, I have a slot, and they've chosen not to take that slot. The issue is, is if, you know, if, if we don't have the full-day K support in the district budget, it's going to take X amount of dollars in tuitions to afford a teacher and a parent.
Yeah.
You know, so th, those are the decisions that we have. And that's, that's.
It shouldn't have to go up.
That's the issue.
Right, it's a double-edged sword.
The actual cost right now of our full-day K, right now, it's costing us 490,000 for five teachers, three pairs, supplies, materials, et cetera. How much does it actually cost us to provide the full-day K? Is, are any monies coming out of the operating budget to supplement what the parents are paying? How much are we collecting, you know, as a revenue stream? And if, if possible, do we have a cost per pupil?
We can look at that. I mean, that, we can definitely look at that. I know in '20, when we shut down, we lost money, because parents stopped paying. I know we have to sometimes cover parents who commit to tuition, and we don't have a scholarship fund, so parents who commit to tuition, and we don't have a scholarship fund, so we end up paying, um, or something happens, I know that we have special education students that need a full day program, um, that they're here for half day and we provide the special ed services in the, in the, in the afternoon piece of it. I think we can look at what it costs actually, but it is, it, it's becoming more difficult to count on parents to pay those tuitions as they go. Um, people pay upfront and, or, you know, we're not chasing folks yet, we have in the past, if checks bounce or if their, now Venmo doesn't work, but we don't have the, the means to do that either, we don't have the staff to chase folks, but John and I can do that, that operating assessment as far as that for you.
Yeah, okay, so we're saying seven forty plus, for lack of a better way of saying it, the three teachers. Uh, you know, what is our total cost of running the program, is it seven forty plus of three teachers? Is it higher than that? You know, what revenues, so we, in other words, is there some monies within the operating budget? So if it's costing us two hundred and fifty thousand and we've isolated that it's gonna cost us, you know, for lack of a better number, seven forty.
Yep.
Uh, so now it's really not seven forty, it's really down to five hundred. Or four ninety, you know what I'm saying?
I do, let me just, let me take that note, okay?
Cause I feel like, did we look at that at one point when we were doing some stuff over the summer?
We talked about it during the ECE.
Didn't we identify?
We never got the numbers.
But I thought we did identi, I, there's a number floating around somewhere, I think, where we looked and I think that was part of the, I think you're spot on.
Well, and I know I threw out some numbers.
But I think you're spot on with the, that whole conversation of the revolving account is not doing really what we had.
Supposed to do.
It's not self-funded, salaries.
So to your point, it really isn't seven hundred and forty thousand.
So how much are we subsidizing?
X in, right.
So one of the things I think, I need to interrupt you, but, but one of the things that we talked about the summer is, if you have a, we set a, a salary, or we set a tuition rate at, at thirty-two hundred dollars and there's twenty kids in a, in a class, eighteen kids in a class, and the kindergarten teacher is now at Masters forty-five, Step Thirty, that's not covering. And, and we have to make that choice of the kindergarten teacher who's been there since, you know, Mr. Howard was in kindergarten, do we put the new teacher in because they're cheaper? Into kindergarten, move that other teacher into the LEA budget? So that, that's, that's the challenge we have when we haven't increased our, our rates as far as bringing in any extra tuitions. It's not, it's not keeping up with the salaries we have for our staff. Yeah, David?
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to add, um, to Jeff's point that we haven't raised the thirty-two hundred tuition in about a decade now.
Yes.
And because of that, we are subsidizing the program by about half, to my understanding from our ECE conversations, you can correct me on that if I'm wrong. But I just figured that's some more food for thought, that we are already subsidizing a program that at the current rate of tuition, we can't keep up to fund and we can't expect parents to pay thirty-two hundred for a program you can go to surrounding towns and get for free, I mean, it's just unrealistic in my opinion.
Uh, sorry, were you pointing at him or did you have?
No, I, I did wanna follow up, right, because area towns are paying four thousand, right? So actually, if you live in Whitman Hansen and you paid for full day K this year, you actually got a discount. You did got a discount, cause it really costs more than that for our district to fund that staff and that full-time teacher and that para, so if you can afford it, you get a discount, if you can't afford it, the thirty-two hundred, you get no discount and your student goes half day.
Chris?
That's not okay.
So, and just kind of to Fred's point, in terms of calculating the actual cost, are we? Just, go ahead, no, you're good. Are we able to pull out the amount we're subsidizing the half day K now? And consider that in the total number, total cost? Uh, can you just repeat that question, so I just make sure I get that? I may not have it, but. Okay. If we're subsidizing the pre, the pre-K program now? Kindergarten. I mean, kind, uh, half day kindergarten now. Full day, yeah, we're not subsidizing half day, but we are in, 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 in terms, yes, we are putting district money into the. It's the full day that we're subsidizing out of the, the, the general fund, right? Can we include that amount in terms of when we, when we establishing the overall cost? Yes. That's all I'm asking. Yes, I, I hear what you're saying, yes. Thanks.
Okay, so what, what else?
Did you say how much that was, I'm sorry?
What, how much we're subsidizing?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I don't have the exact number.
No, I don't expect you to.
No, but half is a good chunk.
Right, that's why.
I didn't think, I didn't think we came up with a number though, I know we had talked about it.
We'll, we'll get, we'll get that accurate number.
Yeah.
And make sure that it is, but the, like Dawn said, the problem is, is that we have expensive staff and, and low tuitions coming in. And we have not touched the tuitions in, in a long time.
Hillary?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I think, reiterate what everyone's saying, I think getting more of this information broken down for us is going to give us a more informed, more information to make a better decision for the students, right? Like, I, I am totally for full day K, but I don't have enough information, I also don't wanna bankrupt our budget in FY twenty-five because of the way that we're paying for it right now, right? Like, I started this conversation by having concerns about how we're paying for it, I don't want anyone to misinterpret that as me not being in support of tuition-free full day K, it's being able to continue to offer it to students, right? I mean, what are we gonna do, we're gonna offer it and then in two years be like, sorry, we don't have it anymore, or cut another program, cut a third grade teacher, cut a fourth grade teacher, so, you know, this second grader got free full day K, but now they're in a class of thirty-five, so the direct instruction they received, it doesn't matter anymore because now they're lost in the shuffle, that's not okay. So we need to really know these numbers and see them broken down so we can make a decision, if half of full day K is being subsidized by the budget, then that, that's a big deal. As someone who pay, who's paying this year, you know?
Just wanna add quickly that it's not only about voting it, you know, having enough information to vote for it or not, it's about voting something that we believe in and then going into the community and supporting it.
Yes.
So it's, it's very important that we have an accurate understanding of what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay, so you'll follow up some more on full day K, is there anything else you need from us or?
No.
Are we okay leaving it as we're still undecided how some of that funding will?
Yeah, I, I think, I think this is good follow-up, I also think, you know, we will put in those staff members too, so you can see some different things. And again, looking at what, what you're willing to do as a committee to send to the towns. As far as an overall budget, as far as an assessment. Again, I, I, we built a lot of this around what, what we had as, as, as figures last year from both communities, and trying to keep it as low as we can. So, I will do that and, and at our next meeting, we can absolutely, you know, put some things forward for you with more accurate numbers.
Full day K or something different Sean? Um, yeah, I think we're, are we good with full day K?
I just wanted to go to the five-year plan.
You can talk about that, sure.
Thank you.
I just had a question about, um, non-manated bus, transportation. Does it? At least the way I read it, it says that, this is rough estimation, but you said the transportation budget as is right now for FY.
Can you say what you're referring to, do you have a document that we?
Um, they went over some of the busing stuff last, last week.
Can we hold them, can, so, can you ask that question, but I, can we, before we get to, I guess it's technically part of the budget, are you guys, keep going Sean.
Yeah.
Keep going.
Sorry. You just said as is, it's one point seven million dollars, and if you take out non-mandated busing, it's one point, it's like one point five or whatnot, that's, I mean, a hundred and fifty thousand that's taken off, roughly, so savings to Whitman would be roughly a hun- whatever the savings was, like, a little over a hundred and fifty thousand, is that right, just rough numbers?
So I don't have that in front of me Sean.
But, just roughly.
I, I'm not even gonna say it's rough, I, I.
We did, yeah, I think that's the problem, we did it last week, so I don't think, I don't have it.
I don't, I don't have that in front of me, and I mean, I'm be certain, if you, if you pose a question, I can get that information for you.
I guess the point is, Whitman's being charged a little bit over four hundred thousand. But you're saying if you take out non-mandated busing, then mandated busing costs one point six million. So the savings is only like a hundred and fifty thousand, but you're charging Whitman four hundred thousand. So to me, it, it seems a little bit funny like to say that, like if you, you take out non-mandated busing and what's left over, there's a difference of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and then add, you know, there's some extra costs or whatnot.
It's all about roots, and I don't have that in front of me. Could you have to watch the, we covered this pretty.
Yes, so the, the, the question I'm asking you is, you're saying, if you, if you take out what Whitman's costs of non-mandated busing is, that you have a savings of about a hundred and fifty thousand, but what you're charging Whitman is about a little over four hundred thousand dollars, so the savings and the charge don't equal, it's a pretty significant difference. So I, I'm just saying, it, that, rectifying that seems like a, an important point for me.
I know Mr. Stanbrook and Jeff can get you a very clear, clear, concise answer. But after the past two budget, or past two busing presentations that I've been involved in, it has to do with the roots and the buses.
Yeah, no, I, I listened to it.
And how Desi determines non-mandated busing, so when you have your non-mandated and mandated.
Yep.
They will give you X amount of dollars for all students that live, you know, within a range.
Sure.
Uh, outside, I think it's a mile and a half?
Mile and a half, we get reimbursement.
We get reimbursement, anyone closer than a mile and a half to a mile, is that correct?
What's that?
Mile and a half to a mile?
So, so, so let's, let's do this, cause I, so we did not, we spent an hour on non-mandated busing a week ago, I think Sean's question is clear. The question is, hey, you're charging four fifty over here and we're saving one fifty over here, help me reconcile that and we can take that away and bring it back for the next meeting, is that okay?
Yeah, and, and I'm fine, I was just trying to.
No, I know, but I just feel like we're gonna have, like, none of us have it in front of us, I'd like to have the, I'd like to go back and bring my presentation and look at it so I can follow along and everyone else do, so, is that okay? So you'll add that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you Sean. Related to the budget? Come on.
Uh, please forgive me, cause, uh, all my numbers were done off the last present, presentation. Answer to your question, uh, early, Mr. Boyce, it's one point seven three million added to the budget, if you add full day K, it's an additional three hundred and seventy thousand. Uh, I'm not here to speak on the validity of the services you're asking for, that, that's entirely up to you and, and I truly believe that they obviously will make our district stronger. The reason why I'm here tonight is basically to speak on the budget and how it was presented. And personally, if you go back to the original packet, Mr. Stanbrook's, and fantastic work John. And, and what caught my eye was Document sixteen, the party highlights, and it kinda was touched on this evening, that if you proceed with this budget by twenty twenty-five, you will have depleted END. You'll need eight hundred, almost eight hundred and sixty thousand of END next year, one point one million, and you have depleted END in the following year, you've created a one point five million dollar deficit. I'm not, like I said, I'm not here to argue the services, I'm actually here to speak on personally how I think how reckless this budget presentation actually is. You will not only put services in risk by using one-time money, you'll be putting teachers' careers at risk. I think obviously to proceed and get these programs if you want them, there has to be a plan. And that plan is getting to be pretty obvious that it probably consists of an override to make this sustainable. So instead of using one-time money, now, I, I recently was turned on to, and I believe a couple of you follow her, Tracy Novak on Face, on Facebook and one of her links led to a, basically, uh, idiot's guide to using S R funds. And it was some pretty, uh, top-notch educators from Rhode Island, Baltimore, et cetera. And the main takeaway of that is not using one-time money for recurring costs, and they actually come it out and say salaries. Like I said, I'm, I'm not here to argue this, but I think by doing this and using one-time money in twenty twenty-five, you will not only have put your own services at risk, you'll be putting teachers' jobs at risks, and you'll be compromising the towns. There's a better way to do it, it may not all happen this year, I don't know, I'm only one person saying it, but it needs to be a plan. And I've stood up here for a long time, every budget year, and have said, it, it's almost lunacy the way we do this, that two month, two months before a budget, you know, town meeting, we're getting hit with this. I think the town of Whitman absolutely would, would support full day K, it probably is manageable in this budget, but a lot of these other things are not going to be. Uh, we had a rough budget present, yeah, presentation of our town budget. It's a first pass, so anything you're hearing, the FinCom will be doing their job. I know it was eyebrow raising a couple lines to some selectmen of where we were. But the town of Whitman, and I can only speak for the town, we've done a lot of work recently to try to get sustainability. I think we've talked about that, you talked about that here earlier this evening. If there's one thing that this budget does, it's certainly not produce sustain, sustainability. And as a citizen of the town, I ask you to come up with a better plan to put forward rather than risking services, because I think that's what this does ultimately in twenty twenty-five.
Okay, yeah, thanks your input.
Thank you.
So.
So I was, can I get the five?
You said, you're right to your five-year, the whole five-year conversation, so.
So, so, you know, John put this together and one of the things Chris and I talked about was looking at the budget subcommittee, looks specifically looking at FY twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and over the next couple of weeks before this budget was, was voted on here, letting the subcommittee meet a few times, two to three to four, and potentially inviting members of the FinCom on both sides just to, to look at this, and, and, and our goal with John is to provide some sort of forethought to make that a zero balance by twenty twenty-eight, what's the thought process of that? So we wanted to tell you that tonight, because we are, we have a FinCom, or not a FinCom, a, a budget subcommittee tomorrow night, just to kinda get an overview and see if those folks are on board, and then moving forward, try to meet next week, a couple times, the week after a couple times, and now for certifying this on, on the sixteenth, provide you all folks a general idea of that look forward, and again, for me, this is new, because we've never looked forward. We, we've been just floundering and I, I'm not against looking forward, but I did tell Chris, I said, but the issue I have is I need to pass a budget for this year as well, cause I got kids coming in, who used to say, coming in in September until that year they didn't, you know, or, or always showing up. But I do think the sustainability and the look forward is, is essential, uh, especially for, from, for this committee now, making some decisions around the government funding that we have that will go away. So I think the, the, the thought process was just sharing that with you, and what say you, is that, is that a plan, would you be supportive of that subcommittee move, looking at these items and then presenting back to this committee?
Yeah, I, I wanted to add a couple of things, so definitely not, this is an ask, right, not what we're gonna do, so, we did post a budget subcommittee meeting for tomorrow night, but we can cancel it if we don't wanna do it, because if we decided we wanted to get rolling on this, it's a forty-eight hour posting.
Yes.
We wouldn't be meeting next week, close the whole thing down. But I think, you know, looking at this five-year plan, right, and this kinda goes back to what we were talking about earlier about, is there a way to start to figure out how this becomes more balanced over the five years, right, because it just, I don't know if I would use reckless, that's Randy's word, but I, I, for me, it's concerning, right, it's concerning that, you know, we're, we're depleted, like I said, like he said, we're taking END all the way down to nothing. We have federal funds that are expiring, we have assumptions for the town that just don't make sense, so I think there's a way to start to work through this, so, yes, we need to, we need to get through this budget cycle, but we need to make sure that we align, so one of the big, there's a few big things, so not only, you know, if, if David and Steve or John, Jeff are willing, you know, we will work on this Document sixteen and look at it, but I also think, you know, um, and, and this was, Sean had reached out on this, really spending some time on hold harmless. So the, hold harmless is huge, right, so hold harmless, we look at area districts and they're getting like three, four million dollars in state aid. If we were getting three or four million dollars in state aid this year, we're having a totally different conversation, but we're in the hold harmless, so trying to understand better how the decisions we're making today may impact hold harmless, and trying to understand what is the plan maybe to get out of hold harmless, right, because if we can somehow do that, that is a different game changer, so hold harmless would be on there, enrollment, right, we need to look at enrollment, so we're down thirteen point nine percent over the last seven years in enrolled. Right, we, we need to look at that, so it would be enrollment, and then like you said, talk to the finance committees. That is kinda what I had on the list of things to do, so, yes.
I don't wanna interrupt, but I think a lot of people out there may not understand the whole time.
Yes, thank you, that was exactly what I was.
And how, why are we held harmless in other places or not?
Yeah, so.
I, I know what it is, but I know.
So from, so the, the simplest way, I think, to explain it, and you guys can jump in if you're, the simplest way is the state, does their calculation of aid? The simplest way is the state, does their calculation of aid, they make a determination and they say, this is what you should contribute and this is what we're gonna give you. Based upon that math, it's 4.4 million dollars, I think, roughly, John. It's document 26, it's in here, I'm not even gonna flip to it, I'm pretty sure it's 4. something.
4.3?
Right? So when they do that math right now, they're basically saying, we're giving you 4.3 million dollars more than our calculation says it should. So when they do things like the Student Opportunity Act or when they do things like all alternative funding mechanisms, we get 25, 30 dollars.
30 bucks a kid.
30 dollars per student. So that kills us because then every time, to use John Stanbrook's words, we say, hey, we just need a modest, maybe 3% factor for our budget, which kind of makes sense if you look at labor costs and all this stuff. Every time we say that, we can count on the state for 0.00 something and the towns are gonna have to come up with 6%, which then creates this massive problem. So understanding how that works and where that fits, we really need to do that. So does that kind of answer the question of why?
And it has to do with the per pupil expenditures by the towns too, does it not, all probably us?
I think that's just a way to do it, but, but yeah.
Well, how do you get out of hold harmless?
You pay more. But Fred and then Don and then, yeah.
Real simple, okay, the minimum local contribution number has to go up for the towns, what they're paying needs to go up. So it's six of one, half dozen of the other. We've got to make up 4.3 million dollars worth of revenue from the two towns to get out of hold harmless. Now, the MLC with the Student Opportunity Act is going up, I believe it's 7% per year. So you have an annual increase in that compounds. I know Whitman is well above their MLC. Hanson, I believe, is moderately above, you know, at this time. Eventually Hanson's going to be behind the eight ball and Whitman's gonna have to increase to the same level because the budget has to remain quote unquote equal, so to speak. But that's gonna happen real soon. That's the only way we're gonna get out of hold harmless. But getting back to my original hand raise, if we could do not only, you know, if we do a five-year forecast, do years one, two, three, and four within that, because I think it's pretty evident from everyone on the committee, everyone's concerned about spending one-time money. You know, it's, it's scary. It's scary to do. If we look at maybe covering some capital items, you know, for the district through one-time money and if that frees up town money, you know, so be it, maybe that's a conversation we have. But at least we're not limiting ourselves to worry about, geez, how are we gonna fund this next year? The positions that we have within our budget that, that are being funded with one-time money, are we willing to pull those right out of things? You know, because they should be directly related, as I said, to the COVID expenses, to catching kids up. Now granted, there may not be a magic eight ball, so to speak, that you can ask and say, okay, tell me, next year, two years from now, are we gonna need these? But we have to be prepared that they're a short-term fix for a specific problem. That's just how I feel.
Don and then Chris.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for bringing up the hold harmless and the Student Opportunity Act because I don't think we talk about it enough. We could probably have a whole meeting on it. But Hillary questioned, how do you get out of it? One is exactly this, this graph.
No, I know how to get out of it, I was asking it historically.
No, but just to expand on that then, not to explain. But last year or for FY '22, we were 5.9 million hold harmless. So why did we dip down and reduce that to 4.4 million is exactly the Student Opportunity Act? So the governor in his FY '23 budget is fully funding that piece of the Student Opportunity Act. It impacted our foundation budget. So we have declining enrollment, yes, but the state is recognizing the cost of education is a little higher. So that's where it's, it's now coming into play that, that they're, how do I explain it? They're incrementally getting us closer to the goal of state aid, which your aid should only be 41% of your budget. And your local community should expend 59% of your budget. And, and that's been since the beginning of Education Reform Act. And I've learned this by going to Tracy Novick's chapter 70, 70 Minutes on 70. You know, there's always supposed to be that balance, your local contribution should be 59%. Tax revenue towards your budget and your state aid 41%. So another increment that will change is the value of our half-day kindergarten students. If you look on the chapter 70, it's now about, those half-day students are funded to our foundation budget of 900,000. So conceivably, and I called DESI to double check, that when those half-day kindergarten students become counted as a full-day student, it essentially could reduce our hold harmless by another million dollars. Just in that. But each year, as they continue to fund through the Student Opportunity Act, we'll see that hold harmless shrink and hopefully get to a point where we receive more aid.
Could you repeat that last part though? I'm trying to pay attention to what you said, I couldn't hear you.
The last part?
Yeah, you said, you talked about the increase in the continued money from.
So it's, the Student Opportunity Act is a six-year phase in.
Okay.
From FY '21 to FY '27. So each year, the state is committed to contributing more state aid, really. They're, they're increasing their chapter 70. And it's gonna be spread across all the districts. But we're not realizing it because we're in that hold harmless stage.
Yeah, and that spread is not always equal, right? So there are certain communities that are gonna receive a much larger percentage through the Student Opportunity Act than some of the suburban districts. But yes, Chris and then David.
So outside of that atypical kind of thing with the Student Opportunity Act, right? Is the only mechanism to reduce the hold harmless amount is for the towns to pay above their minimum local contribution? Is that the only mechanism?
I think that's something that we can probably try and look at.
So that's what I'm wondering. Fred's, I think I heard Fred correctly, is there a way to move things around so that we can?
When, when they do their formulas with the MLC and where they're raising the minimum local contributions, that helps to shrink that barrier or the gap, so to speak. So that, the net effect of that will help reduce the hold harmless.
So Chris.
I'm talking about intern, not so much with the.
Yeah, so no, there's nothing.
For us, us is to spend more.
Right, so there's no, I don't think, so for me, there isn't this magic wand that we're gonna wave to get us out of hold harmless. What I'm trying to do is help us analyze, right? Based upon our current path, when may that happen? Because that's important for us to understand because that is going to impact the revenue in, from that point forward. So there is, I don't think there's any magic wand we can wave where like, oh, now we're on hold harmless. Yeah, maybe we could have the towns spend a ton more just because, but again, that, that to me is not the answer to the question. It's doing what we need to do. When will we get there? How does that look? And then making sure that the things that we're doing are, you know, thoughtful in that regard. So we do have to look at enrollment because enrollment does play a role in some of those components. So these are all the things that, none of that we can control.
Right.
But we just have a better understanding.
So I guess going by no question is a dumb question, but it's like, if we, if the only way we can do it is, is to have the towns pay more, right? Is there a way we can work with the towns to essentially include that kind of predicament in a five-year plan? Like pay, like work to pay it down somehow?
Yeah, I don't, I, there is, I don't know, here's a short answer. I think the more we can try and build accurate projections, then the more the towns can build their plans. And I think everyone right now is working through all this one-time or limited-time federal and state aid that we receive. So there's, there's ways to think about that. Like Fred's point is, I don't know, you know, are there ways to, we talked briefly as we were walking out the other night. There's debt and that debt costs you money. If you pay down the debt, then the debt cost goes away, you start to, that's a way to free up your operating budget. So I don't know what the towns are thinking with some of those things. We should probably be thinking of the same thing. So it could be a lot worse, right? You know, we, we all had an influx of a lot of funding over the last several years that was not anticipated. So we're not, it's not doom and gloom, but we gotta be really smart about where we're gonna go because we all know it's gonna go away.
I guess I'm just thinking it would benefit everyone involved for us to get out of hold harmless, right?
Yes.
Would get more state funding.
Yes, it just depends on how we do it. I mean, I'm not sure, like, if we, if we went to Whitman and we're like, hey, we're gonna increase our budget by 10 million dollars this year.
I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting anything specific. I'm just saying it would make sense to me, if it benefits everyone to get out of hold harmless, for everyone to work together to get out of hold harmless. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah. All right, so in terms of the, no, I'm sorry, David, David, yeah.
No, I just wanted to make a comment in regards to hold harmless in a budget subcommittee. I've noticed a lot of committee members are, you know, asking what is hold harmless? And also I believe Hillary brought up a great point, you know, does the public understand the full extent to hold harmless? And something we're talking about in budget subcommittee right now is to not only do a hold harmless presentation and figure out how that would be implemented towards the full committee and to the public, but also discussing OPEP too, because that's a topic that, you know, I think gets passed over quite a bit, but it's an important one that we need to educate the public and educate the full committee on. So as of right now, on top of what Chris already mentioned for our agenda, we might be elaborating more on the hold harmless presentation and an OPEP one and going from there. And then maybe weighing out scenarios on how we get out of it or what is the exact predicament we're in. So we all are aware and we can, you know, to Scriven, your point, work together to maybe get out of it or to put ourselves in a better predicament than we are already at. That makes sense, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Just to David's point, as far as OPEP goes, and I think it might be good to have another presentation, but we've had two or three in the past, you know, that we've gone over it extensively. As of a few years back, it was estimated a million dollars a year for 30 years. And I'm gonna say that's probably four years ago.
Yep.
That was our liability.
It's a million bucks a year.
A million dollars a year for 30 years. Okay, now I know we're far in excess of that type of number.
So kind of just close up this conversation, is the committee okay with the budget subcommittee doing those meetings, working through that, trying to see what we can do, working with administration? It's not gonna be, how do we change the FY '23 budget? That's not the focus. The focus is, hey, let's look at the long-term plan based upon what the committee has supported and what administration's looking to do and how does that play out and how can we help build that long-term plan? After we're done with that, we get through the budget cycle, then I think we start to move into, how do we, you know, what do we focus on for education? How do we do more outreach? How do we do that understanding? Right, I still think there's a, there's a missing link with the towns where I don't think they understand how state aid plays a role in our budget. I just don't, I think it's a complete misunderstood piece where it's like, why is the school asking for so much money? Like, what, what's happening here? They don't realize that the state's giving us this and the towns are giving them.
You know, one of the problems is, you know, the regions were promised certain things. When you go, when we went to complete regionalization from K to 12, we had all these promises that were kept. And that has caused an extreme problem with our finances too, that, you know, if they had followed that. And plus, with the way the state figures out the money, regions have always, I was on a commission years ago about regionalization and, and another one, and it was with several lawmakers and discussing the problems that regions have, regional school districts have with the way that everything is budgeted and how the formula and how it impacts. So I mean, that needs to be brought up when you do, you know, when you do a presentation, how that impacted everything too because it's still hurting regions. The regional school district, if you look across the board throughout the state, they're having a lot of the same issues. It's not just us and unfortunately, and for some reason, this commission that I was on, you know, it was all big paper and this whole thing, the presentation, and nothing ever came of it, you know? And I mean, unfortunately. But it's something too that I think people need to be aware of, that they can also put forth pressure to fix that mistake and fix that error, if it ever can be fixed. It's been brought up, there've been bills filed and everything and it's just not, it hasn't helped us.
You go back to 2007, we received 2.3 million dollars in chapter 70 funding. Governor Romney changed the formula and the following year, we received nothing. And we've not received a penny other than the minimal increase ever since.
All right, and again, think of how the conversation would be different if we were, even if we just get in the 2007, 2.7 million. Like, how our conversation tonight would be very different. So it is what it is. Okay, so we're gonna meet, the only other housekeeping note that I'll add is just for the public. We will have the subcommittee meetings, they will be public, we will have an agenda. But I think for the first couple, we're not gonna really do public comment because we want to get the work done. So what I wanna, we certainly want public input. This is just me speaking, if you two agree. I think we need to really work through this. We will then maybe after, you know, the second, after the second or third one, open it up to public comment. But what I don't want to do is get derailed with, we sit down, we're trying to get through the work, we're trying to plan this and it's, you know, questions. I think there'll be time for questions, I just want to set that expectation.
Can I ask a selfish question?
Sure.
What time are you meeting tomorrow? Because I know we're meeting at 3:00 PM and I've got a 6:30 Capitol meeting.
5:30 to 6:30, but we won't meet here.
What, budget?
Uh, yeah.
The budget's a year into, okay, so I'll make my.
I think. Rosemary, thank you for waiting, please.
Thank you, Rosemary Conley, brought by Franklin. Just from my perspective, I would ask that you also calculate loss of state aid to show what would happen if we were, I think, you know, showing the, the total consequence of not getting to, well, target share or getting rid of your hold harmless debt is what I like to look at it as. Might be a better, bigger picture for the community.
Sure.
So, thank you.
Okay, you got it, thank you.
So I'd like to propose our next meeting is March 9th and it'll be strictly budget. Give you guys some time to, to work through it. We have to vote on the 16th and again, we can always move that, you can't go higher, you can go lower. And if, if it's a quick, we could have a regular meeting that week or we can push the regular meeting to March 23rd.
So let's think it through for a second, right?
The, one of the, one of the reasons I'm saying the 9th is I will be on vacation next week and, and the 2nd is the following Wednesday. So I don't know what I can get done or what John can get done before the 2nd.
So would we flip it, but wouldn't it make sense to do the business meeting on the 9th and the budget on the 16th?
We could do either, I just don't know how much conversation people want.
What if we, what if we wanted or needed to have some additional information as one last gasp, so to speak?
That's why I put it on the 9th, that's all.
When does it have to be? Do we, we have to send it to the towns?
We've said it, the 19th is the 45th day.
Are we meeting with FinComs or Select?
So I was invited to meet with the Whitman FinCom with you all and you'll get an invitation on March 15th.
And I did reach out to the Hanson one and say, hey, we'd be happy to meet, we being.
So, but I would say that we could do, do a budget meeting on the 9th, it's up to you, however you wanna.
Well, no, no, I'm just going back to the original timeline, right? So I, I think, because I, I heard, I even heard this in a Select's meeting where they referred to our timeline that we said March 9th would be our regular meeting and March 15th would be our budget meeting. So if they're planning on that, I just don't wanna, I don't wanna throw a wrinkle in their plans by.
We could have a regular meeting with budget.
With limited budget, yes.
We could absolutely do that.
Yes, but with the understanding that the 16th, we probably need to.
Have a three-hour meeting.
Get close to done, if not be done.
Done. We'll have to, we have to send it that night, so we have to vote it that night.
So what do you, what would you have on the 32, on the 23rd is if necessary?
If, if necessary. I mean, that means if we certify the budget and all of a sudden you folks wanna decrease that budget, we could do it.
So, so is everyone good with, we'll have, like you said, we'll have the regular meeting on the 9th, but we'll spend some time on budget with the understanding that the 16th should be our target to be done with budget? Is that?
First week of April, I'm in South Carolina.
The reason I put it all there is in the past, we've almost met every week after we even certified the budget, on the budget. So I just wanted to make sure the people were there and we had things written down. So the 16th is the date for me to make sure we send something to the, to communities. And again, we've talked about budget all the way up to May 2nd.
And if the budget subcommittee meets with the finance committee, it's gonna be to talk about the five-year plan?
Not.
If they wanna meet to do the FY '23 budget, then you'll post that and do it however you want as the full committee. If they want to do it as a twofer, then we'll do a half and half.
So I'd be, I would be thrilled to see at our regular budget meeting, even the, the subcommittee's projections for two, two and three as they co, as they coexist with this year's budget. Because I think we need some information on that to make an informed decision on this year as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, yeah, so the plan would be to have a revised five-year plan by the time we're talking.
16th.
On the, potentially the 9th, but certainly. On the, potentially the 9th, but certainly by the 16th.
Are we meeting on the 23rd also, or is that a TBD?
It's a P, TBD, right?
Okay.
I hope your Wednesday's free.
I'm just gonna put it in.
Okay.
TBD.
So I think that was all we had on the agenda. Does anyone have anything else? I know that was a lot of information, but thank you all for, for severe. All right? We get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Have a great night.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.